And we're certainly glad to have her. And this gentleman is Roy Haddock Jr. Roy has, he's our licensed psychologist over at Hillcrest. Roy has over eighteen years' worth of mental health experience in individual counseling, group counseling, substance abuse counseling, residential treatment, you know, you name it, he's had it. You would rec, Mr. Reeves would recognize him from Lee Harney Mental Health. He was over there till all the rumblings started with reform. So he's been out, you know, he's been a private contractor, I think, since then. So he's agreed to join us for thirty hours a week. We were certainly fortunate to have him.
Really are.
Lee Harney, Sandra and Roy, for all of the commissioners and the county manager, thank you for coming to Lee County and wish you much success up in the Social Services Department. Welcome.
[applause]
Well, I got four left. There's, there you go. Sandra?
Yes.
And Roy.
[inaudible]
I don't know. I don't know if I should be alarmed or...
Depends on what matters to you.
It's, David, is that it on the new employees?
Yes, sir, that is it.
I've gotta ask the question, what is the, what is the balloon in the back, what's it saying?
You're special. We're curious to know.
You're super, you're special? That's my son.
Okay. All right. Okay, the...
Ellen, why so special? Just a few minutes.
I see.
The, do any of the commissioners have any items to add to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we'll start at the right. Ms. Reeves?
I do, but I can't remember.
Okay.
One, Mr. Chairman, an issue on ordinance reference tow and recovery of vehicle. Countywide, citywide, I'm gonna go to the city board about it as well.
Okay. I had a discussion on vehicles.
It's tow and recovery.
Code. Okay. Is that it, Jerry?
Yes, sir.
Bob?
No.
I'd like to add one, if possible, under C1, Board of Education requests additional funding, if this is apropos to that. A few years ago, we created a Citizens Advisory Committee to look at space needs. I think now, based on a lot of new information about public education, we ought to consider creating a citizen-led effort with representatives from both to talk about how we can maybe overcome some of the obstacles in public education, thinking outside the box and such. I think I discussed it with the county manager.
Where do you, where do you want, you want that under?
It could be under C1, just 'cause it'd involve them.
Okay.
Wouldn't be a long one, just an idea. That's it.
Ms. Stevens? Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Stroh? Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir, we have one new item and two additions, two supplemental items. Additional information regarding item 3F, just a clarification of a clerical mistake in your packet. And then item 7F, a recommendation from Senior Services Director Debbie Davidson. That's just additional information for your consideration. And then a new agenda item that we recommended be added to consent, which is the acknowledgement and adoption of a resolution passed by the Lee County Board of Elections at their meeting this week, which is to support a kids' voting program in Lee County. So suggesting that that item be added under three, as 3H.
Okay, that's an initial consent. What were the other two? You say you handed those out to us?
Your supplemental agenda packet.
Heard. You...
It says, yeah.
Maybe under your notebook.
Supplemental items.
Yeah, right here. Pass that out.
Let me see, it's 3F, that first one and second one.
It's just a clarification of a clar, just a wrong number in your packet. It wasn't revised. And then a recommendation from Mr. Davidson.
Okay, we got one.
Putting these all under consent?
No, just that one under consent. Consent, he's...
Please do the Lee consent. Kids voting for the million dollar lottery. See that? Actually, it's Dubs in Arizona that not only voted.
Oh. Tell them where they, if you vote, you have a chance to win a lot.
Chance to win a million dollars, if you vote.
If you vote, yeah.
Okay, under the consent, the recommendations release other many funds. You're talking about the contingency funds, David, for Southernly?
Correct. There was just one error on the transmittal sheet. We're just clarifying that error.
What was the error?
Error was the amount.
The amount. It was, it was not revised.
Okay.
The school board revised the number, we did not.
Okay. Gotcha.
I know that ink is better than mine. I forgot what, why is it? Bob Hughes gonna show up today?
Yeah, later, I think.
All right.
Do you want to approve the agenda as amended or...
Motion has been made to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion adopted. The entertaining motion approved the consent agenda as amended. Motion made by Commissioner Adams to approve the amended consent agenda, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion is adopted unanimously. Are there any public comments, Dan Alton? No requests of public comments. Hold those business, 2007 revaluation presentation. Hi, Jim. Jim.
Chairman, members, thank you for having me. I'd like to point out that a month ago, I followed a Star Trek actor, that's your new police officer.
You what?
He followed a Star Trek actor.
Yeah, last month. This month, I'm following a Navy SEAL. And I've got the anxiety of also wanting to find out what the balloon is about myself. So I will try to answer your questions as well as I can. I've got some opinions, too, on top of that. We have taken over the remaining canvassing, the company, Assessment Solutions has taken over the remaining canvassing of the county. There's obviously been some changes in the past month, and I'm here to answer your questions.
Does anyone have any questions to ask?
What are your recommendations, comments that you wanted to make? I might have more questions after.
Okay. Well, this goes into the, the opinion phase.
All right.
You've had a problem with organization up there with your rebound. Just the sheer number of times that you've got personnel handling the cards over and over again. I just found out today that there's two more issues that have not been listed on the cards, haven't been corrected and placed into the computer yet. And so we're up to five times that every one of the thirty thousand cards are having to be handled before we get them. We've taken receipt of approximately fifteen thousand cards already, and we found out a week ago that the error rate of data entry was at fifty percent, and none of the fifteen thousand cards that we had had been corrected. So it's things...
Is it easy for you to go back and get those ones that had...
We've got, we've got your people up there taking work home at night. We've got them taking home on the weekends. We're working basically straight through. Matter of fact, I've got Lori and Wally here, part of the team with Lee County. And so it is doable, yes, sir. We are getting it done. The people upstairs are getting it done. It's just, it's an act. I mean, it's an act to get from there to here, but it's getting done.
You mentioned counting it five times. The natural presumption is it shouldn't be just one time.
It should have been one time, and that's what we spoke of before, when I was here months before. Your canvassing should have been completed twelve months ago. Machinery Act is very specific about the way that you do particular things. I think that you discovered some of that with your process of discovery that you had going on twelve months ago. All property owners need to be treated the same within the same year. And so when you've got, you're changing some cards, but you're not getting around to all the cards, and you're taking, you know, twenty-four months to do your canvassing when it should have taken you ten months because you're averaging eight, ten a day per person, you can't meet those guidelines. So that's the reason that I think there was a lot of rushing to get this aspect of it done, then we'll go back and do this, and then this. And so a lot of repetitive motion.
What about those that have gotten the extra discoveries for the year 2005? What happens to, and they pay?
Those, there was an override made for those.
Those that were not billed. There were some billed early, which is far previous to Mr. King's.
That's what I'm talking about. That's right. I'm talking about the ones that were billed.
What happens is those are billed, they're on the books, they're being paid, they're in values. The others, which was about four thousand, like he said...
Are there any of those that are in error? That's what I'm driving at.
I can't answer that question.
I mean, if the ones...
The ones that are on the books?
Yeah, yeah. The people that might have gotten, you know, received a bill, re-invoiced, paid the invoice, and they're like one of these other...
They're in error.
Fifty percent errors. And I asked the question at the last meeting on data entry, on the quality control of the data entry. At that time, I was assured it was a hundred percent.
Not by me.
Does the taxpayer see anything that they can look at to just do some kind of quality check?
Well, the tax cards are actually online now, and they are receiving some phone calls from people that are reporting errors.
Okay.
How are you tracking corrections? How do you know? Have they been made in the head?
We started, well, that's a good question. There hasn't been a tracking mechanism in place.
Well, I'm aware of that.
And they couldn't tell us what rate of, you know, rejection or corrections were having to be made. That's part of the reason that we're doing a ten percent sample of the county. Right now, we're running at about a fifteen percent error rate from what you've got of the corrected, corrected corrections, if that makes sense.
What is acceptable?
Five percent.
Five.
I mean, you want, I mean, the state stip, well, the state suggests ninety-eight percent to a hundred and three percent, somewhere in there. But there are problems. There's also inconsistencies. We're running into...
They've gone on, they made a revaluation, and they, they, they put in some changes to the property listing. And then the property listing was not corrected, was not entered properly.
Right.
That's, that's error number one. Now, it's, that is corrected, let's say, okay? And you're saying of those that you've audited, that there's still a fifteen percent error?
Yes, sir. Of the total corrected, there's still a fifteen percent error.
Is that related just to data entry, or is that going down all the way to the data collection?
That's everything. That's everything as of completely finished and corrected per the tax department.
Okay. Could, could there be instances where the data entry was done correct, but because what was gathered in the field was not correct, and you're kicking that out as an error?
Yes, sir. Right.
That'd be tough to find.
How do you find that, once they're done the field? I can understand the data entry being, you know, somebody professing that it's correct and that you find an error in it. But in the, in the data collection itself, how are you determining that?
I'll give you an example.
Okay.
You've had some data collectors up there that did not obviously visit the property. You were doing a full remeasure and list, and so what you had was existing property report card and new blank property report card. Some of those people were guilty of copying this to this. There were errors in the data entry that could be picked up because it didn't fit. In other words, when they took this and entered it, there were problems. If this is turned in to us as a credit card, and we actually go out into the field and we're pulling tape on ten percent, they were wrong from the start. They were never graded.
Okay, so you're going out in the field on ten percent?
Yes, sir.
Well, supposedly, they were going out in the field on...
Yes, sir.
On ten, every ten percent.
That's all you needed to say. That's all you needed to say is you're going out in the field, you're going out in the field and you're picking up a report.
So why would we be doing any more data entry until we know what we've got in the field is up to five percent, or preferably two to zero percent?
Well, time or anything else. And that's the reason that we've taken over the field collection from, you know, this point forward.
Which field collection, field collection for the record is just a couple dou, three dozen commercial entities left, which are, can be some more complex.
Yeah, I don't think we're talking about what's left. I think we're talking about in the past, some of the errors.
You mentioned that he's taken over the rest of the field collection. I just want you to know that's probably three dozen, four dozen.
Can you trace this back to specific data collectors out of the field?
Yes, sir.
Should be able to.
Yes, sir. They all have individual appraisal numbers, and they're all dated when they were visited.
Are there some that should be a hundred percent checked? That's what I'm getting at. Certain, certain people that are out there in the field that show more errors than the others that maybe you should check, check them a hundred percent?
I hope the answer is yes.
Yes, that is the case. Yes, sir. I think in most cases, from Lisa Faulkner, she said that she's released about ten of the thirty-two part-time people that you had for that problem. The problem was, okay, let's back up again. They're doing data entry right now, and in some cases, they're doing data entry on properties that were visited a year ago by someone that's no longer on the staff. So the problem, there's a couple of problems. A, wasn't visited, because obviously there was no quality control in place to check it a year ago, we're just getting around to doing it now. And B, you know, if it does check out, I mean, if the, if the building balances, the measurements balance, and it's accepted as is and recorded, is it right? I mean, was it visited at all?
I would, wouldn't ask this question if I didn't think I knew the answer. Is what you're having to do now part of the scope of work you originally contracted for?
No, sir.
Are you doing it pro bono?
No. We're, I promised, yes, I promised, I promised this board that you were going to get a good rebound, and you are getting a good rebound.
Right.
It's just, there are some people that are going to do it kicking and screaming.
Right, I understand.
Well, undoubtedly, this has taken extra time. What about the timeframe?
Timeframe has not changed. That's the reason that...
You think you're gonna be able to do it?
I know we are. Yes, sir. But that's the reason that you've got people up there. You've got some very dedicated, resourceful people up there, and they're taking work home every night, they're taking work home every weekend. So it is getting done, but it's getting done differently than originally planned.
I know, I certainly have no intention of sounding ungrateful, but I also don't want to see people penalized if you follow what I'm saying. So I would like for the manager and certainly legal to be on top of what we're doing so that we don't get into some other areas down the road. What you're doing is very vital and critical to us at this time, and I appreciate it. I know the board members appreciate it. We've got a very dicey situation we're having to deal with.
Well, and I think that's the reason that I hesitated while ago. I mean, obviously, everybody's got an individual number, an individual qualifier. We haven't looked at that. We're not tracking, we, Assessment Solutions, we're not tracking who made errors to what.
Right.
We just want to get the job done correctly and get it done.
That's what that lay.
So we're not making any judgments on blame. We're just trying to get a job.
I guess.
I think a point of clarification or information that the board needs to be aware of, and I know this is what Chairman Hinks was probably, in his mind, when he asked, what is the quality of the previously billed discoveries? And Tim, you can certainly correct and fill in wrong, but when there are errors, they are overwhelming, not in the county's favor. When we mismeasure, it's usually under-measure. We're shorting ourselves. Taxpayers are not being asked to give more. I would say in ninety-five-plus percent, it's us shortchanging ourselves, it's not us sticking it to the taxpayer. That is just not the nature of the type of errors that we're talking about. So I think that needs to be understood.
Well, in the beginning of this whole process, that was one of the things that was recognized, that there were so many properties out there.
So many buildings.
Uh-huh. So what was the percentage of those? If we're still at fifteen percent, what was, what was the percentage of those that we originally, you know, we took two hundred properties, one...
Right.
I thought there were like two that were...
Hundred fifty-seven at one time, a couple of samples.
Yeah, uh-huh. But I just wondered what the percentage of errors in those was.
I have no idea.
Because it doesn't sound to me we've gotten much better.
Well, it's two out of five were underpaying, one out of five was overpaying, and two were okay.
I think even by accident, just the effort itself, it's gonna be better. Maybe we're not to the level we hoped we would be at the beginning, but the county's records will be aware as a result of this project. They may not be as much as we would have wanted.
We have eighty percent of the records have errors in them.
Oh, they do?
It should now be.
Eighty percent. Well, eighty percent, I've heard figures, David, that the previous rebound had up to eighty percent of some technical errors at some level, and eighty percent of the data was flawed in some way. And now, we're down to this fifteen percent. So we're far cry from where we were in the previous rebound. So this is moving in the direction, we're fixing a lot at once.
Right.
And that's a Herculean effort when you look at counties across the state, going from where we were to where we're attempting to be is, we have to do it.
It's a big project.
Yeah.
Critical, by the way. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Price.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
At this time, I would like to ask William Johnson to step forward.
Or Mr. Jay. That's how we all know him, William Johnson. We've known him as Mr. Jay forever, so every kid in the county knows him as Mr. Jay.
I call him Mr. Johnson.
I bet his dad didn't call him that.
I don't think so.
Sounds like him.
Chairman and members of the board, the Employee of the Month Selection Committee has selected Mr. William Johnson with the Lee County Youth and Family Services Department as the Employee of the Month for July 2006. Mr. Johnson has worked for Lee County since 2004 as a residential childcare worker. It is clear from his nomination that Mr. Johnson is commit, is a committed steward of our most precious natural resource, the children of our community. Mr. Johnson takes a genuine interest in the shelter's youth. This is apparent by his attention to their needs, the structure he provides, and the respect he shows when listening to their concerns. Mr. Johnson approaches his job with a can-do attitude. For example, a child had been referred to the shelter, but based on information received, some felt that because of a behavior issue, the child might not be an ideal candidate for the shelter. Mr. Johnson was asked to interview the child. After the interview, Mr. Johnson reported that he felt the child could be worked with, and as it turned out, the child did work well within the structure of the shelter. There was also the case of a foster child that had reached a point in his life where he could either choose to continue down the path leading to trouble or the path to a productive life. This child chose the positive direction and wanted to attend Tar Heel Challenge, a quasi-military program for high school dropouts or expellees who, left unguided, could be headed for trouble. It was learned that to attend the Tar Heel Challenge, this child needed a mentor. Mr. Johnson stepped up to the plate, took the necessary classes held in Salemburg, North Carolina, and invested his own personal time and money to become this youth's mentor. As a result, this child graduated from Tar Heel Challenge and is currently a member of the Job Corps in Virginia. In addition to helping the children of our community, Mr. Johnson is also ready to help no matter what a person's needs are. For example, an elderly disabled man in our community was in need of assistance to obtain a ramp chairlift that would allow him to leave his home. Upon hearing this and without hesitation, Mr. Johnson took up the man's calls, asking for donations, and eventually getting the chairlift built. The committee felt that based on the recommendation and Mr. Johnson's dedicated service to Lee County, he would make an ideal choice for Employee of the Month. So at this time, the committee respectfully requests that you join us in awarding Mr. William Johnson Employee of the Month for 2006.
We're proud to have you here. We're proud to have you as a, as a fellow North Carolinian. You're doing a fine job for, for the youth, for the county and the state. We're, we're just very proud of you. If you'd come forward just a minute here, I have something for your desk. There's a little star award that you can put there. And I'd like to read this. Boy of the Month, July 2006, Lee County Government recognizes William Johnson for going above and beyond the regular duties to be an outstanding employee. This is authorized by the entire board, signed by the county manager. Congratulations you on that. Something for the balloon carrier. We have some pizza.
Turned out pizza, though.
And we have some Coca-Cola products for you. And, yeah, there's a movie ticket and one day off of pay. Appreciate you. That's a privilege to be working with you.
I believe, Mr. Johnson, you worked with Boys and Girls Club before here, worked with youth, long-term dedicated to youth and helping youth in the community, and were former military outside.
Ten years Army, supply side of Army, and three years as team director, Boys and Girls Club, Duxie Stone.
And we appreciate your service.
You just keep up the good work.
Well deserved.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to just say a few, few words.
Please.
First of all, I'd like to look back and I'd like to thank Ms. Brenda Potts, because she hired me two years ago. And it's been a tough two years. I'd like to thank us Margaret Johnson, who's our supervisor, and Ms. Kathy Faison, who couldn't be here today. And my wife, Michelle, right there, who's seen me in the trenches. My pops back there, Mr. Fonzal, right with the balloons. And it's good to get balloons while you're alive, but we don't do this for awards. I'd like to acknowledge the entire staff at the Hillcrest Youth Shelter, which we deal with nothing but at-risk youth. And we're not always the most popular people in town. I've been called quite a few names in my time. I'd like to acknowledge the whole staff at Hillcrest, and just acknowledge them, because they see me getting these gray hairs, and sometimes you have sleepless nights. I didn't have this many gray hairs when I showed up here at the county. But I like to acknowledge every last one of my coworkers.
Even at our, where you're from.
That's right. Mr. Smitherman, I'd like to acknowledge him to the left, because the day he came to acknowledge the award, and Ms. Lisa, I thought I was getting fired on a Tuesday. And I always said, if I've gotta get fired, let me get fired on a Friday, not a Tuesday. But on behalf of the Hillcrest Youth Shelter, we'd like to thank all of the members of the board here who just have supported us. You don't see the work that we do, and it's a tough job, you know? It's a thankless job sometimes, but like they said about the young man, we had to believe in these kids sometime when nobody can see it, Mr. Smitherman, but us, but us. You know, and sometimes you just have to go with your gut and just go out there, and the kid, I had to go to juvenile detention that day to go into detention, and I told him, he didn't know me from nobody else. I said, in fifteen minutes, I'm gonna decide what happens to you. And he hugged me... And he hugged me, and I hugged him, and, and we brought him back. And I tell you what, he was one of the most well-rounded kids I have ever crossed, ever. So, on behalf of all the staff at Hillcrest, from Ms. Brenda on down, we would personally just like to say, thank you, thank you, and thank you. I'm going to have to leave off, because I'm actually going on shift, so I'm going to have to change my clothes and go back to work. Mr. Chairman, if you don't.
Yes, sir.
Let this, this proud dad stand here before you.
I was going to ask you to say something.
Oh, really? Oh, yeah, a couple of days. But I'd really like to thank the commissioners and the chairman in acknowledging my son in this manner. I am, I'm doubly, triply pleased that I got my son back. He came back from Baghdad. So, he was, he was one that made it. We had a lot of body bags coming back from Baghdad, but my son made it. His son, my grandson, is now stationed in Hawaii, and he's rotating back and forth to Iraq. So, keep, keep all of us, and the ones that didn't come back, in prayer.
We certainly will.
Thank you very much. I drove down from Pikeville. Another one stop to.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a request to appear before the board, Darrell Jones.
Good afternoon, Darrell.
How y'all doing?
Doing just fine.
I want to thank y'all for letting us open up the Lee County Mud Motorsports Complex for starters. We have opened it up. We've ran it now for three events.
How's it doing?
We've, we've raised forty thousand dollars for the Deep River Volunteer Fire Department and charities and racers in three events.
We need some more mud racetracks.
What kind of, what kind of attendance are you getting, Darrell?
It's still only around a thousand, and the majority of that being of the competitors themselves.
Only around a thousand. That's amazing.
Well, I mean, I was really wanting to see us be able to build that fire station in about a year. At the rate we're going at, in a couple of years, I wanted to pull a Humpty Wheeler and, and make the track a little different than every other one again by being able to have fireworks. In attendance in our, our racetrack, we've been averaging about two hundred kids per event. If y'all went online to NCMudRacing.com, you've seen the, the homepage on there actually has pictures of the, the children's power wheels racing, racing their little battery-operated trucks out there in the mud. But it was a good time, good family fun. But why I'm here today is to, to get approval, to have a small fireworks display. I've already got the fire departments there. I've got two pumper trucks, and I've got sheriff's departments there on-site as well. And then I have a capability of six thousand gallons a minute in water to put out, you know, we're talking about a couple of boxes to be, to be shot out there, not a major power techniques display. And I was told I would need to come see y'all about that. Another thing I wanted to see about is I know the county has got a plan for natural disasters and things like that, but I have a better plan. What I have is a picture of George Forsman. He's your secretary under Homeland Security. He has dealt with my business as Bidding Electric Incorporated, and he found out we were down in New Orleans during Hurricane Conference again this year. So, I wanted to give all y'all these pamphlets, why it's here, so y'all can help the people that, that are making the money decisions, to make the right decision, because our plan don't cost any money. I go to all the towns, I'll be in Miami tonight, and I'll be in Miami probably at eight o'clock. I would have been there earlier, but they'd moved, moved it from one to, to three, so that kind of blew that all out. But I, I've got responsibilities at that point, and I did want you to look at them.
Describe the fireworks, Darrell. He's not going to be paying, he's in North Carolina.
These are five hundred grain, um, box legal fireworks you can buy in South Carolina. If you live in South Carolina, they'd be legal anyway. I mean, that's, that's not a big fireworks activity. A very, well, I mean, compared to town's fireworks, it might be a challenge, but, you know, to a big, major event, it's not a challenge.
David, there's a, there's a, an application that we have. All you need to do is fill that out and get it approved. Whoever need to sign off on it, we're done.
There is an application process, it's managed through the Fire Marshal's office.
Right.
It was actually a permit that I received, I got a soft copy of it, and it was just a permit.
Yeah, you just had to get that. I just didn't know, because in what we received, we didn't know you had already gotten that.
Yeah, I got that, but that's, that's not a permit. I mean, it's, it's an actual permit. There is no application for permits. There is no, I didn't find an application for a permit, but I found indeed was a soft copy of a permit, so I was not filled out.
Same thing we go through with the J.C.'s once a year, so.
Right, because you have to have.
Mr. Roy, what does he need, what do we have to do to?
I do have, I do have the insurance.
Normally, we require insurance, and if the display is, if it's exclusive, it gets because he has somebody who's knowledgeable in order to put them on.
Usually, it's the site plan, the insurance, and then we approve it, and that's it.
But that, that's part of the application.
Yes, sir. We've got an application form.
But what, the application form was there, it was just a request to appear.
I did not have, I did not receive the application.
Was that all I got, was a permit and a, a filled-out permit?
The question is.
We need, where does he get an application form?
Fire Marshal.
Fire Marshal?
He's the one that sent me the permit, I believe, the, the permit that was not filled out. He is a new Fire Marshal I spoke with.
Can we just ask this, what the process is?
Sure.
I have no idea. There is a process.
There is a process.
How, how everybody doing today? Basically, what the process is, the permit that we emailed to Mr. Jones, they fill that, they fill that out, they return it back to our office, see the facts, they can bring it in. We go out, we basically do a site assessment. We look for the egress and ingress for a lot of things that he's already done the leg working on for the, for the engines, for the fire department. We also look at EMS response routes, can the trucks get in and out, are they bogged down in the mud, things of that nature, the approvals on the roads. And once we confirm that, we look at the combustibility area around, where they're looking at the fire, the fireworks, make sure there's not a ground cover hazard there that catch on fire, things of that nature. Once we do that, we sign off on the permit, we, Mr. Hall indicated, we look at the liability insurance, make sure they've got the riders, then if it is over a certain drain, which Mr. Jones alluded to, once we ensure that it's not of that, for the specializing permitting for the state, then we would, we would bring that to you as a consent agenda, just like the fireworks disposal for the Fourth of July. Basically, just in a consent.
Can we approve it pending his sign-off to expedite the process? Mr. Hall, can we do that, say that?
We need to let him make the inspection he's talking about.
He has to make the inspection, we have to have.
Well, that's what I was saying, pending his approval.
We have to have, we have to have a.
Okay.
An group inspection. Application.
Yeah, when, when will be the next run?
Uh, the next run would be August the fifth.
See, before.
We also want to do one in November also.
Yeah, I got October, November, September, so October, September, October, November.
If it was going to be the same.
It's the same weekend, same Saturday every month.
If it was the same format and everything, we could just approve it for.
All of them.
Submit a mall, submit a mall, go out, do the inspection.
If it's the same site, same type of fireworks, everything, we could just do it all at once and add it up, which would help you out as far as.
Have the Fire Marshal bring back a recommendation to give to us the next meeting.
That'll be after their next, after their next. Mr. Roy, can we go ahead and prove this, pending the Fire Marshal's inspection?
We can delegate authority to this gentleman to make the inspections, and if they suit his approval, authorize the, the manager to issue the permit.
Okay. Motion has been made to, to authorize the Fire Marshal to make the inspection, and would you, after you, after you have approved the application, would you make sure that we get a copy of it and send one to each, so there can be forward all of the issues, please?
Yes, sir.
Is that all right? Mr. Roy, is that?
We have motion.
Yes.
Okay, a motion has been made in this regard. Any discussions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion is adopted unanimously. Let's do it, so we're not upsetting his August the fifth.
Absolutely.
Nice to meet you. No, where you was at, I know I spoke for your dad's here. Where is this here, if you need to comment, that is the liability insurance and things that I do have.
Did you go already?
No, I'm going, I'm going to listen to the rest of this stuff, too.
You got to go to Miami.
I know that, but I already had to, I'm already way laid out till six o'clock.
Is there already five presentations?
Sure, absolutely.
This is another cost thing. I spend a lot of time out and about in all the cities. Miami-Dade, Homestead, Key Largo, all those areas, a lot of places in the west, the Mississippi, Biloxi, Ocean Springs. I mean, we, what we do, we literally save thousands of lives, because we, we have the, the resources that's necessary to, to get it done, and there is no contingency fee. You know, I deal, most of my regular business with bidding electric is indeed municipal business or repeat business, and, and I work with the towns, know they ain't got no money when it comes, you know, at the end of June, there's no money, so, you know, we work on those things where it's, it's very cost-effective for the count.
Okay, thank you, Darrell. We've been duly warned, you have some money. We have a request, the next item is a request from the School Board. I talked with Mr. Tatum last evening, and as a result, we have a revision to that request. However, I'd like to consider their initial two hundred and fifteen thousand. Does anybody have any questions on this, on this additional request from the School Board for additional money? It's all caused by the, by the state increasing the, budget increase for that, and of course, this is to match the local teachers for their funding. Does anybody have any questions? Fire, ask Chairman and.
You can call me to raise one. What, what do you think? You say you talked to the chairman and?
I, I just was, I, I'd called the chairman last night, I just wanted to know the mathematical basis behind requesting this two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
You didn't say he asked for more than?
No, his.
I know that, but I'm just saying.
No, 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 no.
That's what I thought I heard.
Nope, no, no.
Okay.
Well, I, I don't think we need to have a difference in, in the salaries of the state people and, and our local teachers.
Agreed.
So, I don't, I don't know that we have, have any choice other than to approve this.
I'm just.
Very concerned.
You have a choice, but to be fair, you know.
Well, you know, it's my understanding that, you know, what we do is we fund the schools X number of dollars, and the school system gets to decide how we're going to spend that money, or how they're going to spend that money. We don't hire those teachers. You all hire those teachers. So, so there's a parameter, in my opinion, of the budget. And so, if we don't have the control, and we certainly don't and we don't want to, to hire any of those teachers, I don't feel like it's up to us to come up with a shortfall that all of a sudden is apparent, because the state funded.
The state had a surplus.
Yeah, the state had a surplus, exactly.
We didn't.
So, I, I just see that as, all of a sudden, we have entered to an area that we are not really a part of. What we do is decide X number of dollars, and you all determine how they're going to be spent. So, that's, you know, I, I just feel, I see it different.
When we, when we work our way through the budget, we work with figures from the Department for Public Instruction, and the, the communication received today was an effort to clarify that during that budget process, it had been projected that salaries for certificated people would approach five percent and non-certificated four percent. All right? At that time, we didn't realize, we were not informed, we had not been told that there was even debate about the increase in retirement, nor was the topic of minimum wages a dead issue yet. So, as the House and the Senate put their bills together and moved through the General Assembly, we had already approved our budget, you had already done on June fifth what it was you do and fund the local portion of it. At that point, we were fine. Since June fifth, you saw the salaries at the state escalate to eight percent, which, by the way, is somewhat, eh, not quite accurate, and I pointed that out in the memo today from Tammy. So, we've incurred, as it'll turn out to be, even far more than we thought we would, but the board does not have the latitude to put, whether it's two hundred and fifteen thousand or two hundred and forty thousand dollars into the salary pot without making other decisions, which goes back to what you said, Amy.
And correct me if I'm wrong.
But this is over and above that any of, any of us thought we would receive, would hear from Raleigh.
Right, right. But the state gives you all X number of dollars because of a funding formula that they've got, and they, they will say, for this number of students, we will give you, you need these many positions, and we'll fund their positions. Is that right?
To, to a point.
Okay. And then, the local school board in turn says they see a deficiency in their need, whatever their needs are, whether it's personnel, technology, just whatever it is, you all come to us, asking us to help out with what you're trying to do in educating these children. But we don't know if it's teachers, we don't know if it's equipment or software, we don't know. All we, all we know is that there's this need that you have, this monetary need that you have in order to do what you're doing. So, we don't know if it's positions, we don't know when you cut, we don't really know when you add.
Well, the foundation, you're accurate there, but in this first budget that our group has built, you saw the pluses and minuses in positions, but you're right, you would not have the reference point from where I, from where we started.
Right.
But we were very explicit about the reduction of a hundred and five or a hundred and six thousand dollars in administrative services. We're very specific about the potential to reduce, the possibility of reducing teacher-assistant positions, although the board is talking about dip, dipping farther into low wealth. But the low wealth dollars that are going to be coming from the state have been farmed out into enough positions that we're going to be pretty challenged in that area.
I was fascinated several months ago when Mr. Reeves presented this forward with the fact that we're funding over almost nine hundred thousand in local salaries and supplements from the administrative side, side, and if you add teachers in it, we're over a million. Based on the numbers you gave this forward.
You have nine, it would be ten. You will have ten locally funded assistant principals. You will have two district-level directors. You will have thirty-one teacher assistants, and you will have nineteen teachers.
Funded locally.
Yeah, now, we can do away with the Director for Special Education, and I'm not sure how we would coordinate that, those, those efforts. We could do away with the Director for Career Technical Education, and I'm not sure how we would handle it. We have done away, we have done away, as I said, with a hundred and five thousand dollars worth of it.
My concern, based on the recent information that we've been reading, because No Child Left Behind, accountability and things like this, we're now graduating from ninth grade, twelfth grade, four years, statewide, it's around sixty-six percent. There's no company in the world that we would bring and fund with local incentives that had a sixty-six percent success rate in producing a product where thirty-five percent of their product was not complete. I'm very concerned about, I'm very concerned about kids when I look across this nation, and I think that black male or African-American youths, males, from ninth grade to twelfth grade, are more likely to go to prison than they are to get a high school diploma. And I want to know, I'm just very, very surprised that, that we're continuing to not be real critical and, and address what's going on. And we just stay, we keep throwing more money at it, and in constant, I was looking just the other day, in constant dollars, adjusted for inflation, over the past thirty years, we've doubled, doubled in this country, the amount of money we're giving per student, and yet graduate, the test rates have stagnated, math, science scores stagnated. Twenty-one percent of the kids that make it to college in this state have to take remedial reading or writing. Remedial, those are the ones that make it to college. And so, I'm not blaming you exactly, but at some point, I'm wondering where the accountability is, whether it's local, or state, or national, what are we doing to save our kids? Because I feel like we're being asked for more money, but I'm not saying that our graduation rates are higher, our test scores are improved. I'm very concerned. I'm very concerned about this. So, tell me where I'm wrong.
I'd be glad to break it down and focus on Lee County. I can't speak for the other 114--
Well, check the Lee County numbers haven't been turned in. Charlotte Mecklenburg's rate's 56%, Wake County's about 68. I don't know what Lee County's--
Well, Department for Public Instruction will tell you that those numbers are not, they can't verify those numbers, because we don't track the young people when they move from one school district to another. And we won't have that opportunity until you have NCYS online, and they pushed us back, you know, last year on NCYS a year, and now they're talking about passing us back again. So, we continue to have inaccurate data. That's not a cop-out. It's just a matter--
But we know they're taking remedial--
No, we're using a lot of--
--supplement in college, and that's--
Oh, sure, sure.
So, if they're making it to--
But who are they? I can't tell you they're from Lee County, I can't tell you they're from Charlotte Mecklenburg.
They're from the public education system.
Yeah, they are, and the public, the public education system that you fund here locally does a variety of things that you and I never even experienced in a classroom, whether you're in kindergarten or 11th or 12th grade. I can speak a little bit about Lee County, I've had 18 months, almost 19 months of it. It is a product for which I think the community has been proud, it is a product that continues to have problems. But I can't speak to the data that people throw around without solid foundation for that data. I just can't speak to it. I think there's some hypothetical in there.
Okay, but when Ms. Stevens says, the DPI says, hey, we, based on the information we have, and that's the lead authority for you--
Sure.
We're giving you everything you need, and so, your group, your board, accountable to the citizens, is funding all these other positions. We don't have a frame of reference on that, and who's to say that, you know, y'all are making decisions, these are all necessary, and when I hear teachers assistants are more likely to be gotten rid of than administrative people, then I'm concerned, because that's, seems like almost a political move rather than something that's benefiting children more.
Well, one thing for Lee County, it's demonstrated that it goes far beyond the 65% rule, has pushed nationally, many school districts falling below it. You're at the 72% level, the amount of money that goes into the classroom. We've just funded, or we've just put in place, six additional teaching positions in K-3 for which you will receive no money because of the geographical split in this community. A lot of the challenges that we have are inherent to our community. You've just put five more modular units in place at three of your middle, at three of your elementary schools. You will have modular units at every elementary school except two, that's Greenwood and Tramway. Whether we agree with certain principles, PLE, that drive public education, or whether we continue to question them, you have in place a Board of Education that put a, that designed a long-range plan for student achievement and student growth and achievement that breaks down into very, five very specific areas. The first one's rigor and relevance, but it goes across the board to housing of students in elementary schools. Whether it's the best bang for the buck or the worst bang for the buck, it is, it is a bang that seems to be working somewhat well because of the community orchestration of public education, Chad, but I can't speak to the Ma'ras of 114 other districts or the nation. I can't respond to the Gallup poll, even though Gallup says things are better.
Well, it concerns me that the teacher's assistants are being taken out of the lower grades, and those are the grades that are most important.
Are you talking nationally or--
I'm talking about Lee County.
No, it's--
I'm talking about our place. Out of kindergarten, out of, out of first grade, second grade, third grade.
That's not where--
Second and third grade are two important grades. Kindergarten is a tough nut to hold with kids who are not accustomed to school.
Bob, I don't think the Board of Education wants to move in that direction. When we brought the proposals to them, and it's a matter of how the word is communicated publicly, we talked about the possibilities. I think that's what you would expect of me, to serve up the possibilities. The possibilities are, there were a variety of possibilities, that's one of them. The first thing the board said is, we have to find ways, other ways, other than to reduce teacher assistants in third grade, and that's the place in which we spoke, third grade. That doesn't make it better than K-1 or 2, no. The board realized a little bit, will realize a little bit more money in what is called low wealth funding, which I think the board will probably strongly consider, so that we don't have to reduce the teacher assistance. I think what the Board of Education has done, and asked me to write a letter to you on June 28th, was narrow the focus. We have these other problems, we have now been delivered, another problem has been delivered. Salary proposals are higher than we had anticipated, and that was sort of the focused message in my initial letter on June 28th, that, at the direction of the board, can we get some help in this area? The board gave us authority to make certain personnel decisions, they did not give me the authority to reduce teacher assistance, and they won't give us that kind of authority unless it's necessary, and that won't happen until September or October when we reconcile our budget. I think they're gonna keep an eye on that very closely, sir.
Have you ever had--
I can't speak for the board, I don't take, I don't, but I mean, they've not given us that direction yet, in three meetings.
We have had--
I was just gonna ask one question. This, this request is to bring the locally funded teachers, correct?
And administrative.
The certified personnel--
Everybody, all employees.
This is administration.
Right. To take them up to the, take them up to the state, the level that the state paid employees are getting, is that correct?
No, the 240 or the $215,000 is to make up the difference between the 5% initially suggested for teachers and 8, and also to make up the difference between 4 and 5 and 1/2 for all other employees, and to pay the retirement increase, and to cover the minimum salary base on--
Right, but these are for locally funded positions to bring them--
No, this is for everybody, sir.
No, this is for everyone, Mr. Chairman.
Everybody, everybody, sir.
This is a 20% increase in local funding for teachers and administrative people.
This is for all 1,200-plus employees who receive some form of a supplement. Everybody, your administrators will not receive any of this money. Their supplement is fixed. Their supplement does not increase each year, other than that $12,000 we put in there for assistant principals. This increase will affect anybody with a supplement. That's a classified employee of 1%, that's a teacher of 7%, that is the assistant principals, I take that back, at 7%. It is your cafeteria worker, it is your custodian, it is your bus driver, but your, the supplements for your administrators, other than your assistant principals, is a fixed factor that has not changed for a number of years.
But it's a 20% increase in local funding of teachers, based on the million, roughly a million dollars that were, that's a 20% increase.
I can't disagree with--
And we didn't have a 2 billion, I mean, we didn't have a surplus, that's the thing. The state only did it because they had a surplus, and they're gonna be facing a steep hill next year, and it's a tough hill to climb.
Have we had a situation, I know you've not been here that long, and Frank's always school will remember this here, where they were funded differently, the local teachers versus the state?
I'm not familiar with that. Up until three years ago, you had a supplement of 3% plus $1,000. No, $1,000, yeah, same thing, $1,000 plus 3%.
I was thinking at one time there was a disparity between the two. Do you know, Mr. Hall?
I don't think so.
You think that we've always kept up?
I can't speak to that.
I was thinking there was a time when we didn't, because we made some efforts.
You'd have to go in and identify 31, but please keep in mind, ladies and gentlemen, this money is for the entire employee pool. This is not just targeted toward 31 teacher assistants and their supplement, 18 or 19 teachers in their supplement and the assistant principal. This 12, this 200 and some thousand dollars affects over 1,200 employees who have a percentage supplement, not a fixed supplement. The fixed supplements will not increase.
And what kind of understanding do these teachers or, you know, whoever it is, these staff have when they come in and are hired?
Their salary schedule is--
Is it explained to them?
Plus 7%, yes.
That you're--
Which, by the way, is the--
--equally, and, you know, these are the possibilities, or, I mean, is it explained to them?
We deal with a common salary schedule, this amount of money from the state and this 7%. The 7% here is the lowest in the region.
Jim--
Yes, sir.
Jim, let me just, I'm gonna quote something here, this is from Tammy's letter today.
Yes, sir.
It says, as you recall, in June, it was estimated that, that was your first letter, an estimated $215,000 beyond our original county budget request would be needed to fund salary increases for our locally paid positions. Not all positions, not all teachers, not all your employees, but just the locally--
That adjective is in error, sir. That adjective is in error.
In other words, the memo we got is in error and not--
The adjective is--
What adjective?
Locally. Or that's an adverb, I guess, I'm sorry, sir. When we're talking about locally funded, we're talking about the supplement. 7% of a higher salary is gonna cost us more money locally. Chad's going in the right direction there when we talk in terms of local expenditure.
Hey, I'm sorry, not everybody got that, and so, they didn't.
And it's $215,000.
So, David, where was you taking?
What would you do if this board--
That's what you're talking about.
Didn't vote in that direction?
I'm not prepared to say that at this point, I've not discussed it with the Board of Education. I mean, they may have ideas, I may have ideas, I'm just saying that there's a discussion that would have to occur.
I wanted to, I'm confused after what you have said and what Tammy said in her, in her letter.
Locally funded, your 7% supplement for your certified people and your 1% supplement for your classified is a local expenditure.
I understand.
And that's what we're talking about, the locally funded part of the salary pool.
Dr. Hall, if they get an increase on their salary, why, and the salary, and the increase is based on the salary, I know the supplement issue is a thing the public generally doesn't understand, but why are we concerned about increasing the supplements? That's what I don't understand. Their salaries are being increased, why aren't we simply focused on salaries and forget all the supplement, any increases related to supplements? Why aren't we simply looking at salary increases for locally funded that didn't get a match from the state? Why are we even talking--
I'm not sure I follow you.
Okay, 'cause you're saying the supplements, we have to increase supplements.
We have to increase the amount of raw dollars that the 7%--
Salary plus salary plus supplement, which increase--
It's a, that's where the word locally funded comes from.
That's where the dollars based on salaries goes beyond 7, 8, 9%. Salaries plus supplement is a greater figure.
7% of $1,000 is one figure, 7% of 7--
1,200 is more.
Right.
So, in terms of raw salary, it increases more than because--
Right, the raw dollars, that's where we come up. We were asked for a formula, we put in some percentages, and trying to balance them in a give and take in writing.
When you guys compare county to county, do you add supplements in there or just compare raw salaries?
For sure. See, the raw salaries are--
I don't know why we just don't talk salaries and get away from supplements.
You can't, because Wake County pays 11 or 12%. Moore County pays 11 or 12%.
Education in general, not just--
It's your supplements--
Troy County.
It just makes it--
It does, but it's part of the business.
Half of the seniors couldn't solve that word problem if they were asked to figure it out. Half of them--
Well, they could if they had a media training.
I'm a senior, I think I can--
I wanted to ask you--
Yes, sir.
And first, I'd like to thank Commissioner Adams for his comments about the black male. It appears here in Lee County, females are now the target, had three--
And there will be.
--in the county jail for several days now. But if you're looking for $215,000, I thought I understood, or maybe I misread, something maybe last week about increasing salaries or monies for-- It was assistant principals.
Assistant principals.
How much money was that?
Little over $12,000. Currently, you--
For each one?
Yes, sir. No, no, total, total, sir, $12,000 total.
Calm down, Mr. Chairman, I was just asking a question.
Right?
You're coming up out of your seat back there.
Right, right now--
We don't have the first lady over here.
Right now, you pay, you have two salary schedules, you have one for the teacher, you have one for an assistant principal, as designed at the state level. The difference between a teacher per month and an assistant principal per month is anywhere from $220 to $300 per month, to assume those additional responsibilities. All right, so let's say a teacher makes $40,000, the assistant principal might make $43,000. On top of that, you pay a local supplement, locally funded supplement, of $40 per month for the elementary and $75 per month for the middle and the high school. So, an assistant principal at the elementary level will make the state's salary plus up to $480 additional dollars. The board has asked that we increase that slightly, also for the middle and for the high school. Total lump sum, a little over $12,000. We're trying to attract some young people here that we can nurture and turn into principals at the building level, or at least consider them as candidates. We saw that as an effort to at least try to move that along a little bit. But that's a small piece of the whole. I think there was some misunderstanding out on the street at one time, that that word was not assistant principal, but assistant superintendents. Their supplement is fixed, will not be affected.
Salaries are affected, are they not?
At the state, on the state's salary schedule, yes, sir.
We don't have any locally funded assistant superintendents.
No, you don't, as a matter of fact, you just got rid of a position.
The chairman of your finance committee is here, Mr. Thompson, what's gonna happen if we don't give you this money?
Stars will fall from the sky.
They're gonna, they're gonna get it, it's it.
Gosh, when you gave us--
Standard answer, though.
Something over $400,000 in the spring. We went back to work to reconcile our budget to that figure, and we did. And so, what's gonna happen now if we don't get the 215 or the 200,000, I mean, the 240? We're gonna be $240,000 less, because we're gonna have to go back to the budget again and cut out 215 or 240,000. Now, is that gonna mean?
Well, Frank, why wouldn't you just not give the raises instead of going back and gutting the--
It's not us, we aren't giving raises. What you mean?
I mean, you're not required, you're not required to match what the state did with the locally funded teachers, are you? There's no law that requires you to do that, is there?
They have to drop it to 6%. And that would suggest that if one more session was not approved, 7% is gonna go up.
Yeah, but you're, are you required to give your local, locally funded people what the state gives?
My understanding, Chad, is that all the teachers in Lee County are paid the same, irregardless of whether they're local or state, on their schedule. When I say same, I mean, on the, on the schedule that they qualify. I was just, you know--
Right, 215,000 is not gonna cover all the raises for your, what is it, 5 to 8%? That's only for the locally funded positions, is that correct?
Only for the 1,200 they've talked about. Only for the 1,200 they've identified.
My, my, my impression that it's gonna cost Lee County 200, I just got the second letter today, too. I've been involved with the letter and the letter today, that we're gonna, we were gonna have to make up $215,000 or $240,000 today out of our budget.
For?
For to pay the increases caused by the state increases to, wherever it goes, Herb, I don't know.
All of your personnel.
Was that for all of the personnel, or just the, those that are funded locally by Lee County?
Herb, I don't, I can't answer that. I can't answer that. It was my understanding that it's gonna cost us, Lee County, I'll use the 240,000 figure, 'cause that's today's figures, that we've got to make up to pay for the cost of the raises that the legislature instigated this year.
But that's--
So, in my, in my book, in my book, you gave us 430,000, you take out 240,000, then our net budget from the county is 190,000. My math is somewhere close.
Is that right, David? Do we have 190,000 for that?
No, he said if we took, if they had to take that 240 out of that.
We've already given them X number, he's asking for addition, too, we're not, they wouldn't take it.
In other words, what I'm saying, Chad, you gave us, what was the correct figure? Anybody in here know what the correct figure was that--
Yeah, which, which we've already given, we're not taking--
You've already given, that's what I'm saying, but if the 240,000 is gonna have to come out of that, what you give us, so I'm gonna reduce our budget.
Okay.
So, I've got to cut something out of our budget--
To give salaries.
--to meet that-- So I've got to cut something out of our budget to, to meet that, to pay that money.
So what you're saying is you're going, these people are going to get these raises even if we don't give you this money, but you're going to cut something else.
You're exactly right.
Well, that was the question I asked.
I, I just answered. We're going, we're going to cut something to pay these, these increases.
With the employees that are certified, that means they work for the state, the state-funded positions, right? That's what certified means. So the state raised their salary and now we have to, that adjusted what seven percent meant. So you're asking us to make that.
Seven percent.
We have, we're paying some certified personnel.
I give up, man.
Your, your approach was okay.
Okay.
We had about eighteen or nineteen locally paid teachers. Right, depending upon which people we put on the state's salary.
So with them, what we have to do is find that increase in salary and the difference in what seven percent means of their salary. Right. And with the state-funded teachers, what we're doing is making up what seven percent means of an adjusted salary that the state gave them. Is that right? We're giving them a seven percent supplement?
Yes.
Right. And that's the only thing we pay on their part because the state pays for their salaries.
Except for eighteen or nineteen locally paid.
Right, right.
And we, and we, Amy, we, we pick out the cheapest teachers and put them on local. And then we get a, a first year, a first year teacher coming in is a whole lot less expensive than a ten-year teacher. So we put that first year teacher under local and let the state send us the money for the ten, the twenty-year teacher and we only have to come out of our budget.
We don't pay based on.
So what you're saying is if we didn't, and of course they're still going to get their raises, but.
Oh, absolutely.
We couldn't say, well, we're paying a seven percent.
And well, let, let me.
You have to say we're paying us six and three quarters or whatever.
Let me explain two things, Herb, if I might. When we went back and reconciled our budget after the, the commissioner's contribution, we had to reconcile. And we got it down. You just, if you got something left, where are you going to put it? You got to, you got to budget it, or we do. We had twelve thousand dollars. Where's it going? You can't hire a teacher's aide, you can't hire a janitor, you can't hire anything, so you can give assistant principals a raise. A raise. And I like to use from two dollars a day to, to four dollars a day. The high school principal makes four dollars a day. The elementary principal makes two dollars a day.
One thing that Dr. McCormick can clarify for our board, as you said, an adverb, adjective adverb, okay. Says, as you recall, in June, it was estimated additional two hundred and fifteen thousand beyond our original county budget request would be needed to fund salary increases for our locally paid positions. You said, wrong adverb, adjective, whatever. You would like for that to say for all paid positions?
Yes.
So the word should be for all paid positions. You want?
And I'll be back in front if you have a problem. I think that's correct.
And, and right now, we're paying somewhere in the neighborhoods of, and I, and again, it's approximate because I don't have Mr. Reeves' memo in front of me, which was a great one, and he's done it twice. Of around a million dollars, we are paying for local teachers and supplements, somewhere in that neighborhood. This isn't, this is an increase of over twenty percent that's being requested. I just want this to be in context of what we're providing and what we're being asked to provide. That is, I, I realize the state don't, you know, we're, we're talking about shades from five to five and a half percent, five and a half to seven percent, things like this. But for us, as a funding body, that is a twenty percent increase in locally, in money that we are essentially funding for local teachers. That's the way it's, that's the way it's going to go in our budget from David to you with the proof.
I'm not sure I agree with your percentage.
I don't, I don't, I don't understand. I'd like after the meeting or something, somebody explain how that gets to a twenty percent increase.
Is it a twenty percent increase of what we?
The million dollars.
The million dollars doesn't include the seven percent local supplement to the base certain about salaries.
Actually, it did. It had the supplements. When, when Mr. Reeves provided it, it was.
Looking at it different. You provided four hundred and ninety thousand dollars in round numbers. We're asking for two hundred and forty or two hundred and fifteen. I'm looking at it totally different. That's almost.
Well, he's saying of our thirteen and a half million dollar preparation to the schools, approximately one million goes toward teachers beyond that which the state says are absolutely necessary.
And administrators, and administrators, and supplements. That's supplements and.
But of that million dollars, does that include the seven percent supplement?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, David, because it was, when he gave it to us, it marked it.
All employees.
He gave us a breakdown sheet. It was a very clear sheet.
I don't know if that includes one percent for all your classified. I don't know if it includes certain supplements, the classified people. See, I've not seen it down. I don't know what's listed.
It was very clear. It showed all of the administrators and all the locally funded teachers and supplements, okay? And it denoted on there by asterisk what was locally funded and what was state funded. So some of them had state-funded salaries, but the supplements were local. And, and so it went through this. So if you add it up, you end it with eight hundred and eighty-one thousand roughly in administrative costs that we are funding locally and about two hundred thousand, a little less than two hundred thousand in addition for the teachers' supplements and on down. That's the number that I'm referring to.
It's got to be low.
No, no, that's.
Well, I'm going to go back to the memo. If we're talking about locally funded positions, you got to take a hundred and five thousand out of that for next year because of the reductions we made in administrative services. Because I mean, your percentages here are very wobbly and, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm not faulting the concept, but we're, we've moved, that was predicated on a memo I think you sent to me or to Tammy on salaries. And I think we responded to two thousand five, two thousand six, but moving into two thousand six, two thousand seven with the reductions at the Heinz Building, that figure's going to change, Mr. Reeves.
Well, then send, then send an updated one.
Because that would mean there's even higher increase. That would mean you're looking at a twenty-five percent.
Frank and Dr. McCormick, what, what started this, what, what started this whole thing? Is that I did not feel comfortable with that one-page letter. Okay. And I made a phone call to your, your chairman. We had a long conversation. I said, I wanted this, I wanted to see all the math behind this. Position by position. Who was going to get this two hu, what this two hundred and fifteen thousand is for? And I'm more confused now than I was before I made that phone call.
Herb, I, I have not seen any of the figures other than what I see on this sheet today. What I know, what I know, and from my, from my position, we've got to pay. Or we're going to be out two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Well, I understand where you're, I understand where you're coming from. I, I, when I saw that in Tammy's letter is, is what I was told last evening, that this was to bring the, the locally funded teachers. And administrative personnel. That were funded totally locally up to the level that the state was funding, the state-funded teachers. That's what I was told.
Paragraph two was to, to present the concept, four reasons why the request is, is high, is, is being made. And paragraph three is meant to be the percentages that show the why. I, I, I can't help explaining what other conversations.
You're talking about in your first letter?
No, the second one, sir.
The second one.
I asked for a formula. We gave the background. When asked for the per, the formula, we gave the percentages. Today it's eight, not the five we budgeted for.
I understand.
Today it's five.
I, I understood that from the beginning.
Well.
But it didn't want to ask you. It went up. I asked you, when you had your discussion with the chairman, I asked you, I said, well, what? Yes, that, that it go up. Nope, didn't go up. Then we, then I get this letter. It's from two fifteen to two forty.
Well, wait. Remember, the letter we sent to you on June twenty-eighth.
I'm looking at it.
Was an estimate.
Fine.
Okay, but now, take a look at one of the parameters in there about the teacher's salary schedule. Teachers are under the impression that everybody is getting an eight percent raise.
But that is not.
On the teacher's salary schedule. That's what we calculated, eight percent. With more veteran teachers on a higher scale getting nine, ten, eleven, or twelve percent.
Up to fourteen.
There's that variance.
Jim, I understand that. That's not my point. My point simply made is this. When I'm asked to consider appropriating more funding, at the very least, I want the best number I can have in front of me. My preference is to have it before I'm sitting here and asked to vote. So obviously, if I'm looking at two fifteen as the request, albeit an estimate, then on the same day that I'm asked to vote, I get an updated version that shows me two hundred and forty thousand.
The schedules, sir, were released Friday afternoon.
That's not, you know, I have some, some of those same.
That's what we.
Problems. But I get my information where I got to get it before.
Couldn't get it from D P I, sorry.
When D P I sent it down.
This is my problem with it. I mean, we are asking these questions, trying to figure out how things are funded, but the reality is, we don't fund positions.
You're right.
You do.
You're right.
Right. So if we decided to fund these because, you know, and which I, I'm telling you, I just think we're looking at it, you know, we're going past what it is that we're supposed to do. If those teachers should leave, we won't know about it. We won't get the refund.
Because it's going to be replaced, you're right.
Exactly. Because, yeah, we, we're just not in the business of, we're not funding those teachers. You all are. So that's why I have a problem with us going beyond the scope that we have there.
And you choose how many locally funded, you choose. You and your board choose how many that you want to fund and not, like, it doesn't come from D P I, it doesn't come from anywhere but your group.
That's first, that's, that's debatable because the six teachers we talk about in game three, if we don't put those six teaching positions in place, we will not get the class size reduction money from the state. We have some geographical splits. See, we get funded.
So where does that money go? If you, if you, if you fund that?
We get funded total, ninety-three hundred students next year.
Right.
They added one teaching position for next year. However, as you look at the growing student population, gate one, two, and three, that's where a lot of the growth is, you have to fund some older positions, new positions, so that you can get that state money to keep class size low. But you can't claim.
So where does the state money go when you get it?
It's the whole pot.
But it doesn't reduce our burden?
No, the state, he's saying that the state actually increased our burden, is what they're claiming.
But, but it increased our burden so that they could get more money?
No, but he, of course, but I'm saying, I'm saying the school.
I was okay with the June twenty eighth.
It's simply saying, we were prepared to do five and eight, or four and eight, whatever. What were your numbers?
Five and four.
Five and four. They were prepared to do that. When the state went up, their position is, well, I need to come to you to go up as well.
Right.
So it's, their position is, it's not our fault, it's the state's fault.
But they can also choose, in, in the third grade situation, okay. You're choosing to, to pay them so you can get the local money. But overall, all those positions, by and large, are a choice they make to hire locally or not hire locally.
Without a doubt.
And that's what we're talking about, is this isn't between them and the state. This is obviously between them and us because of how many they have on staff that are local. But we are now learning, at least I am, that it's for all their personnel, not just for the locally paid positions. So that's new information that is.
The way they get here is by, via the state.
Oh, when they have a surplus, doesn't mean we have one.
And, and the last time I checked, the state didn't care.
That's.
Whether we have a surplus or not. They're simply saying, here's what we're going to do. You figure out how you're going to do it. So the Board of Education comes here and say, here's what our dilemma is. I hear exactly what both of you are saying. I tend to agree. Once you budget them, they decide what they want to do. Truth of the matter is, I think it's still coming back to this table. You don't have to do what they ask, but it's still coming back to this table.
Mr, I agree with Mr. Reeves, and let me say one more time. You know, you gave us four hundred and fifty thousand. We budgeted four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, the state has said you've got to have two hundred and fifteen more. Now, two hundred and fifteen from four hundred and fifty leaves two thirty. So rather than four hundred and fifty budget, I've got a two hundred and thirty thousand budget.
The state didn't say we had it.
The state didn't say we had to add a dollar.
Hey, you don't. You don't. That's what I'm saying. If you don't refund it, I'm going to reduce my budget from four hundred and fifty to two hundred and thirty-five. Oh, yes, I'm, that's, and gas is not getting any cheaper.
To reconcile the budget, we will have to make decisions. I, you're right, Mr. Brown. I started off your question because I haven't talked to the policy makers. I don't know what they would suggest. But your, certain decisions would have to be made to reduce the expenditures still allowed for the raise.
Sure, I mean, that goes without saying.
And it happens to every business and everybody else. It happens to everyone if you don't.
So how much are you asking for? Are you still asking for two fifteen or are you asking for two forty?
The actual estimate is two hundred and forty thousand dollars based on.
If you ask that question.
Bob, if you ask them if they want three hundred or two forty, what do you think?
If you ask them that question, it keep going up.
Mr. Brown, it's the direction of the board. I wrote a letter to you specifying two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
The, the official request is two hundred and fifteen.
That's what's on my paper here, two fifteen. This one here says two forty, so.
Well, can we, can we kind of compromise and, and, I'll make a motion that we grant them two hundred and fifteen thousand?
Everything they do is different.
They're raising the request.
That's just one year.
Uh. Chad, Chad, let's, let's, let's roll through these items.
Let's get, let's get moving.
Let me, let me make one point.
Commissioner, I want to announce a motion just, wait a minute, Chad. Commissioner Brown has made a motion that we allocate the schools in addition to two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per, uh, Mr. McCormick's letter of.
Can we, can we also designate where that money's coming from, Bob? Where are we getting it from? Fund balance? I mean, you're on the finance committee with me.
Well, we hadn't met, and that's another thing I want to talk about.
But where are we going to get the money? I, I need to know where we're taking.
You'll have to come out of fund balance.
So you're taking it right out of fund balance, which is already going to take a while. And one point also, Mr. Smithman raised, I understand the motion on the table.
Mr. Reeves, while you were out, Mr. Brown made a motion to allocate, to grant the additional allocation of two hundred and fifteen thousand.
Now, one other point, Mr. Smithman said, we're going to appreciate about a hundred and fifty-five thousand in Medicaid relief this year. But that is a one-time relief. That is not continual. What we are voting on here is a recurring expense that will not go away. So that hundred and fifty-five won't be there next year, and our fund balance is really tight. We passed a very tight budget that we worked very hard on. We have set the tax rate. We are facing some tremendous capital needs, not the least of which is building a new school.
I, I concur with what you're saying, and I have to admit, I, I'm not prepared to move in that direction today. I certainly want to take it on advisement.
Agreed.
I'd love to have more clarity on how this process works without getting in all the minutia that we tend to get into when it comes to force on the day you want action to be taken. I don't know what kind of deadline you're running against, but you still have the flexibility of balancing and juggling your budget just like we have to do on ours. But certainly, I'm willing to reconsider it at a later date.
And I am with Mr. Reeves.
Well, we, we, can we just table the motion?
I would support that. You could just, uh.
Uh, and, and, go ahead. You take.
Reconsider it the next, next meeting.
We can, we can, we can.
Just, just remove it.
I, I want to withdraw my motion.
He, he's withdrawn his motion. All right.
So I want to understand this more.
Yeah.
Table it to the next, um, next board meeting.
This is an S A T question I want to make. I would have missed this one on my S A T, Dr. McCormick. I guarantee you.
You'd have been in remedial training.
I would have been in remedial training. But I do want to understand it more so that we can make a better decision in school.
Yeah.
And I would further say, uh, request that it be referred to the finance committee that's on this board. I think when we up against a request that, of this nature, that the finance committee on this board should discuss it and make a recommendation to the whole board before it comes to force.
We can do that.
And this is not come before.
If there's, uh, if there's no objections, and your motion has been tabled, I, uh.
Withdrawn.
I, I, I would like to, uh, sit down with Mr. Adam, Mr. Thompson, and the superintendent, Daniel's designation, and, and get this, this, this whole issue clarified for our next meeting.
and, and get this, this, this whole issue clarified for our next meeting.
And if you could get that information to Mr. Brown for us to consider, or Mr. Reeves.
Ms. Reeves is chairman of the finance committee.
Every, every commissioner will get it. Metamucil, that, that's, that's it. Jim, Frank, thanks for coming here this week.
We're not gonna order any, uh, we're not gonna order anything easy.
We'll be able to whiz through this.
I worry about this.
What are you worried, what do we got? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Reeves. I'm sorry, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Dan.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'll be brief in terms of my comments. Um, you have in your packet the, um, a summary memo from me on page forty-nine of your packet, basically indicating that the planning commission did meet after the public hearing a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, they basically had a brief discussion about the proposed amendments, uh, and they, they acted to recommend that you consider approving all the amendments as presented by staff at the public hearing. And you do have a draft agenda beginning on page fifty, or rather, a draft ordinance, excuse me, beginning on page fifty, um, for your consideration.
You have another meeting this week, don't you?
Uh, we do have a joint planning commission meeting, yes, sir.
When?
Thursday evening at seven.
Okay.
Has anything been changed since the public hearing?
No, sir, we haven't changed anything because the planning board recommended what staff had presented.
Marshall, that I, I know we discussed briefly.
That, that was unanimous, too.
Yes, sir, it was.
We talked about the sign, focal signs.
Right.
Did you, was anything changed there? I did not see it. But we were moving toward the, at least the size of these, a sheet of plywood.
Right. Basically, we didn't change anything, Mr. Adams, because we, we felt like if the planning board had continued that discussion and given us some direction to make that change, we would have. But generally, since the planning board approved what was presented, we presented that to you. Because really, the recommendations not from staff, it's from your, from your planning board.
Appreciate this work. Could that, could you guys address that issue at some point? Because I mean, just.
Again, your point, the issue of the size.
Yeah, it was, y'all had a size restriction of two by, basically six square feet, which required anyone that could afford a sheet of plywood to destroy it to make a sign. And at least then, it's fair to all.
I think when we discussed it, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Sorry. I think when we discussed it amongst staff, and of course, Mr. Brigg, if he wants to add any comments, I, I think what we felt like in the county, certainly there may be an opportunity to have a larger sign.
That's what I'm referring.
Um, because you typically have, you know, larger lot sizes, your, your design space for your roads are a little higher.
And your rideaways are a lot wider.
Let's put this on the agenda for Thursday.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Not to say, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Put off, and then put that on the agenda for Thursday.
And move to approve the amendments to the UDO as presented by the planning board and staff.
Motion is we made to approve the amendments as presented by the, and the recommendations of the planning board?
I've got a question.
Mr. Reeves.
On the, uh, I'm just on page fifty, right, now, section.
Right.
On the notice he'll be sent by first-class mail.
Yes, sir.
In your, in your notice, do you require or request a response by those parties that you're notifying?
Generally.
If you follow what I'm asking. Quite often, I've heard people, I never got, I never knew it, I never received it, or, or whatever. Sometimes I think it's just a wise idea to say, once you receive it, you may call this number, or please call this number. And it sort of puts it on notice.
Sure. Uh, to, to answer your question, no, sir, we do not require, generally, do we receive any kind of feedback indicating they received the letter. Um, again, we do, uh, one, this is one form of three things that we do for quasi-judicial, as well as we, for legislative hearing. We send a notice to an adjacent property owner, we also put a sign on the property, and we also advertise in the paper. So, um, we've always felt by doing those three things, we pretty have fairly good coverage in terms of being able to notify members of the public in general, as well as, you know, direct mailing to the adjacent property owner. Typically, sorry.
Is, is that sent out, uh, sort of by mail or roach mail?
No, sir, it's sent out based on the latest tax listing, first-class mail.
First-class. And, and the only point that I'm raising is, if I'm gonna take the time to notice, you'll state the date, hour, place, nature of the hearing, show the list of particular sections, all I'm saying is, if it were my department, I'm taking the time to do that. I'd ask that you call us once you receive it, is all I'm saying. That places an additional burden on them if they choose to accept, that's all. And it sort of says to me that, well, if you receive the notice, they ask you to call me if you have questions. But that's, that's fine.
Okay.
And the other one was, uh, I was trying to figure out that little gray box you were talking about. I'm looking for the page.
Is it the landscaping issue that we talked about the other night?
I, no, this is, this is, uh, on fifty-nine, building design standards.
Oh, okay. Section eighteen, on page fifty-eight, I believe it is.
Well, yeah, but I'm on actually fifty-nine, ten point seven. It starts on section eighteen. But I'm looking at figure ten point seven dash one.
Yes, sir. Do you want me to explain that a little bit, maybe?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What you're looking at there is, um, along our major thoroughfare corridors, which this section applies to. What we've attempted to do is to come up with a, if you'll, if you'll look at the text right above that, is establish a minimum building line. The, the thinking there is, if you go, if you've got a vacant lot, as in, indicated in the center lot on that illustration, if you go five hundred feet in any direction, uh, what we're trying to do is just try to establish this kind of a minimum building line so that if you're going along a thoroughfare or highway, you're not gonna see, you know, one building real close to the road, one building much further back, that you'll have some consistency as you look at that view shed, or you look at that, that thoroughfare. Uh, the thinking is that you try to get some uniformity in how the buildings are placed along there. And what you see in the gray box with the coloration there, that would be the area in which the front of the building would have to be located on that vacant lot. So that you would have your, if you look, you'll notice that the, that actually, the illustration is not a hundred percent correct. Actually, one of the buildings would be closest, there would be a black, it should be filled in where that line's closest to the freeway would be. And then the black at the back would be the one that's furthest back. When it printed, it must've went on, it's got skewed a little bit. So what would happen is, again, depending on the distance of those boxes, the, the gray area would set the front of the building. It could be anywhere within that.
Okay, and, and, and then on the following page, facade orientation, I think.
Yes, sir. What, what you're looking at there, um, if you'll notice right above that, we talk about the, the exterior facades and materials, et cetera, that are basically requested or required in this particular ordinance. And what that illustration shows is the dark bold lines on a building facade, those would, that's where it would be applied, essentially.
And, and see, I was of the opinion that it only mattered on the, on the thoroughfare and freeway, but it certainly shows that if it hits the side street that feeds off of that, you have to be in compliance as well.
That is correct. That is.
So that would be like the building there at the corner of Chatham and, and, uh, McKeever, I'd say.
Well, Chatham and McKeever, I don't believe, because I'm, I'm not sure that Chatham would fall into a major thoroughfare. I think if you're looking like.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, if, if, if it did fall on a major thoroughfare.
Right. For example, Horner and, and, um, Wicker, for example, or something like that, you might get, that, that would be an example.
Right, okay.
I, I, though I made the, the recommendation, it comes with my personal belief in warning system, which is, we need to be careful as we move forward in documents like this, because we, we are getting to the point where we're controlling what elements people can use on their exteriors, whether they can have neon signs or not. I mean, we have definitely moved down the path from the eradication of personal freedoms, and we need to be very aware of that. If it doesn't matter to people, it doesn't matter. But you start saying, you know, low reflective, subtle, neutral, or earth-toned colors have to be on the facade of a building, you have removed my freedom to paint something the way I want it. Or, I mean, and these, these documents are full of them, but.
Oh, you can paint it, you're just gonna paint for it.
I have to do it the way they tell me to. I don't have the right to do it the way I want to.
Back on, on, on page fifty-six. Five point thirty, point two, point three. No more than five non-resident employees should work in the rural family occupation.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
What's magical about five is, what does it have to do with?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you, there's anything magical about five. I think that the five is, is the number that we saw consistently when you're looking at kind of a low impact. Again, let me clarify maybe what a rural family occupation is.
All right.
Um, essentially, that's in your residential district, like your residential agricultural, where you may have someone who wants to go in front of your planning board and apply for a permit to basically operate a business in that residential district. So, so what you would have is a situation which the county's had before. This is not unique to the UDO. That's something that was all out of your old district. These are standards that were essentially carried through from the prior ordinance. The reason this is back in front of you now is some of these standards were, uh, we didn't carry through, they were adjusted a little bit.
I feel the same way about bad laws.
Well, I understand. I, I just wanna give you a little background.
Because you bring them forward, doesn't make them any better.
Right.
I, I'm asking, it, it clearly states that if a person had more than five non-resident employees they're in violation of. Is that what the intended?
Yes, that's correct.
Unless you're a drug house.
But again, the, the intent of that is, again, to try to keep it fairly low-key in terms of non-resident employees. Because most of our rural family occupations are similarly, similar to like a home occupation. Um, they're usually folks who reside on premises, and they're usually fairly small-scale. The key difference with a rural family occupation is it's conducted outdoors. Most of them are in the county, therefore, they may have larger operations, larger storage areas, something that you might would, similar, for example, to, you know, you're gonna have farming activities more so in the county than what you would have in the city.
But they could employ more than five people.
They certainly could. But what we, I think the concern has always been when they start doing that, or they're crossing over and starting to become more of a business or commercial operation.
I mean, if someone is farming and has tobacco and they have twelve employees.
How about the chicken houses and collecting eggs?
Chicken houses, and they go out and hire people.
Right. Now, farming, keep in mind, is exempt, of course, and I'm sure most of you are aware of that.
If you had a hair salon, and all of a sudden, you added two more hair dryers.
Again, I, I, I don't know if five is, is the right number. I think the number has been used, and we've not had, based on our experience in having this rule, has not been a problem.
Well, it's, it's like speeding. It's not a problem till you call. I mean, that's all I'm saying, but five just seems, that's, five. It's more like this, okay.
Okay, motion's on the table to approve the recommendations from the planning board. Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is adopted unanimously. Uh, consider bylaws for BRAC commission, and then we're gonna take a, uh, five-minute recess.
Quick rhythm.
What?
I skipped my agenda.
No, that's still on here.
What's supposed to be EC one? That's okay.
At the June fifteenth base realignment BRAC Regional Task Force meeting in Fort Bragg, each of the eleven participating counties were, were asked to have their Board of Commissioners approve the bylaws of the BRAC Regional Task Force, Inc. These bylaws establish the purpose and authority of the BRAC organization. There are eleven counties participating in BRAC, and they are Bladen, Cumberland, Hoke, Hornet, Lee, Montgomery, Moore, Richmond, Robison, Sampson, and Scotland. These counties have been divided into two tiers. Tier one is defined as those counties determined by the organization that will suffer a significant adverse consequence from the impact of the BRAC actions and other growth at Fort Bragg. At the bottom of page seventy-eight of the agenda packet, these counties are listed and an estimate, and are estimated to have a projected increase in military, civilians, and dependents of five hundred or more. Tier one is made up of Cumberland, Hornet, Hoke, Moore, Richmond, and Robison. Tier two are those counties with an estimated increase of military, civilians, and dependents of less than five hundred, and are Bladen, Lee, Montgomery, Sampson, and Scotland. These counties will participate in the planning and preparation for BRAC implementation and will share equally in all information obtained by BRAC Regional Task Force for marketing and economic development. Lee County is estimated to have an increase of three hundred and ninety-seven military, civilian, and dependents. The Board of Directors consists of twenty-two members, one representative from each of the counties, and one representative that will represent the municipalities of each of those counties. The executive committee is made up of one representative from each county in tier one, plus one at-large representative, representative that represents all counties in tier two. Greg Martin of Bladen County is our representative for the tier-two counties.
Well, if we got an inside line on it.
Greg Martin or Greg Taylor?
I thought it was Martin.
He's from Bladen.
Is it Martin?
Sounds like Greg Taylor.
Yeah, probably. He's the manager in Bladen County.
So what are you asking us to do, listen?
To approve these bylaws that have been established.
Liz, I'm curious, how much are the fees? What, what is the?
I talked to Paul Dorkel, who is the Executive Director of the BRAC Regional Task Force. There are no fees for tier-two counties. The fees that they're talking about are basically.
Unless you get something.
Unless we get something.
Yeah, that's what I said, you get.
Well, he's saying that the, the tier-one counties will particip, be participating in federal funding.
I agree. And if tier-two gets anything, then you have to do some matching funding for it.
They were actually saying that tier-two would not, this is what Paul said at the meeting, would not receive federal funding based on that population amount.
What, what's the advantage of us being or not?
I just read that.
I think it's unfair, really.
And what is our, if we do it, how are we better off? If we don't do it, how are we worse off? What I'm reading is, we're gonna be impacted whether we're a member or not, and what are they gonna pick and choose? Who gets to live here and doesn't get to live here? I mean.
Well, we're actually participating with some of the marketing aspects for the BRAC, marketing for Lee County, uh, with the BRAC website that they'll be addressing. We're participating in selling Lee County to those, um, BRAC.
Tell your friend I said on page sixty-five, that tier-twos, they will not be required to contribute to matching funds, federal grant application, except where they will receive an identified financial distribution. Uh, if that's a misunderstanding on my part, so be it. But that's what it says.
You're right.
And we'll prorate it, okay?
So we could have costs.
Yes, it could be cost.
The way I understood it, the tier-one, um, are the counties that, and I, I heard originally there were five.
There were, they added.
And then they've added one. And they will get federal funding to help them with their schools, because they're gonna be impacted on this county.
But we're not.
We're not gonna be a part of any of that. What we did out of tier-two is, if there are any businesses or things that are gonna locate because of that, and, you know, um, all of a sudden, this information goes out. Suppose it's gonna go out to these eight or nine counties at the same time, so we can all fight for this particular business. But I tell you, I was just so curious, and I was shown it in, um, to see, if you took a pinpoint at the gates at Fort Bragg, which is pretty much where that organization is cent, is located. And then there are all, there's all this space for, um, their airfields or whatever it is that they do. But, um, and to, to go out with a forty-mile radius to see which counties would be encompassed in that, we are totally encompassed in that. And there are only four counties that are totally encompassed in that. And I think we have got a great argument to still be a part, you know, if they've added one more, I think they need to go back and revisit that because, um, obviously, counties that are gonna be greatly impacted are in geographically close to Fort Bragg, and we are certainly geographically close. We are totally encompassed along with Fort, three other counties. So I would like to see us pursue that. I don't know how. But I think if they just look at a map, it's all of a sudden.
They didn't do it that way. It's a joining, it's a joining counties. Arnie.
That's exactly right. One thing is pretty clear, if you get two, you don't matter.
You don't matter. I think we need to buy them.
I can tell you that. That's the first thing you read, if you understand what you read, you don't matter.
Bob, did you know anything about that?
Sampson, and they all. They're all border, yeah. And, 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 even where we don't border, we don't.
I don't know nothing about that. He doesn't know anything about that. BRAC is, BRAC is pretty brand-new, and one of the things you can, you can rest assured is that though tier-one counties are going to be subsidized.
Yes.
And are already being subsidized.
Right.
What I'm concerned with is how it got to the point that we were into without any real involvement. What I'm concerned with is how it got to the point that we were into without any real involvement.
Right.
So, do you know the answer to that question?
No.
You see, the first thing I wanted, when I read your, your information, was how do you go into on numbers that you generated and never confirmed with, without counting? You know, it'd be unrealistic to believe that with the impact that's about to take place in Fayetteville, Hornet County, Cumberland County, that we're not going to feel the effects of those families right up the road. We're probably going to attract more people than, than a lot of their, their counties do. But here we are sitting in a tier two position after the fact. And so, I'd like to know everything the tier ones are going to get before we broach the subject again. I'd like to know everything they're going to get. Everything they're currently involved in, every, all the benefits for being a tier one.
Rob, don't you think if they bomb and it shakes your house, you'll be included as tier one?
I am tier one at that point.
I know, the one person in this room, Bob, have you been involved at all in that, or you've attended some meetings, I know?
Well, Bob, of course, Bob and Bob.
Bob? Bob, can you, uh, can you add anything to this discussion?
Peter Bob.
Peter Bob.
I'm not sure I can. Oh, then, you're going to see non-developed organizations be involved and, and understand what's going on with the project. We had Paul, we had some of the folks come in and talk to us, we had a presentation about what's going to happen in the next ten years there. Certainly had about five. Certainly, we think it's going to be affected by the other ones. At some point, I think they decided to set up a structure with this committee and, and Cumberland County, who is, I think, the only county that has received any funding thus far, to do some studies. And then they decided, well, the, the other tier, the immediate counties surrounding Cumberland needed to be involved also because they thought they were going to get impacted as well. So, the conversation moved from just Cumberland to the tier one counties. Well, we were involved too, um, in participating in some of those meetings and some people spoke up about, there's, there's going to be much more impact than just Cumberland and those initial counties or those immediate counties. To what extent, I don't know that anyone's done that. There's no way you're going to be able to tell who's going to live where and what they're going to do. Uh, but we are going to be involved so that we're informed about what's going on so we can participate in some discussion. We can make presentations. And I think that's Lisa, what you're trying to do, um, just make sure you're part of it. Um, frankly, I'm not sure, and I, I did not attend the meeting where they're asking you to approve, to approve these particular bylaws. Why does an organization, I mean, why did they go to all, or are you going to all the other counties to get the bylaws approved as, as their self?
Eleven, is the question.
Well, I don't, I don't understand.
Originally, originally, where do you mean, what do you mean invited to meetings at all? And, and we got, we got a phone call from, uh, out of Spring Lake saying, why aren't, why isn't Lee County, City of Sanford, participating in these meetings? And we started going to meetings. It became obvious after several meetings that I went to, there was quite a bit of maneuvering and positioning taking place. Just recently, there was this, uh, a study by the U N C Center for Urban Affairs, where we actually volunteered to get involved in the study and, and actively contact. And we received a response to that, from that. We, we believe that Lee County and Sanford will be heavily impacted on two levels. On, on, on the very lead level, we're, we have always been, continue and always will be, very highly impacted by the local staff. Like, there's a lot of people in Hornet and even some in Cumberland County on the shop here in Sanford. And a lot of military people will be that as well. We also believe that as these people are being relocated from the Atlanta area, when they bring their spouses into the, the, the vehicle for recreation there, they're going to be looking for jobs comparable, high jobs. They're going to research private park and Sanford and Sandy County again, which are a very central location. We believe they'll, they'll, they'll receive, they'll be able to do that. I think one of the meetings, because I was told to do not, to say, they were pretty much relegated to the summer invites. We stopped them, so we had enough to stay in that, in the last, period of months.
Well, here's a question I would have. Do you, either one of you think it would be to our advantage to pursue getting a tier one designation?
Absolutely.
Okay, Bob?
I think in the end, um, I guess there's going to be some funding available, um, in schools and community colleges along, be able to, to put down some money from that, from the B M S. Obviously, there are the little tier one counties.
In the la, in the last couple.
Shows that are not a lot of we're going to get very far.
Well.
In the last couple.
When you look at the map, it is so telling. And I, I just think it's one of those things, if it was passed around to those people sitting there, they would say, of course, you'll need to be a tier one, especially in light of the fact that they have enough. Exactly. And we're on this side of that, where Fort Bragg is. Hey, I just, I think people are coming here.
Was anyone, was, was anyone from?
No, but we're going to school. And we won't get help with the community.
The taxpayers will pay for the school.
Yeah, I think we've worked already. Children, the military people, they give money on there.
This is, well, it was explained because I got so upset when I first got wind of it. And I called, um, Tim McNeil, and I know he called you, didn't he, Ed, to try to explain it. And they are getting additional monies for these people.
And these tier, and these tier one counties know how much they're going to get or got pretty good idea how much they're going to get in the future. That, there was a meeting held in, in Atlanta in the last couple of months. Were, was, was any of our folks invited to attend that? I think, uh.
We were invited.
Did we go? Did anybody go?
Want to spend money to go?
That's where they got a pretty good idea of how much money they were going to get, to my understanding.
And they're going back to Atlanta in August where all the communities are going to be able to put on display themselves for the force comm decision makers and disseminate information about their community.
I'll go back to what Mr. Reeves has said a long time ago. We deal with councils of governments. Sometimes, you know, you think you're getting a good deal and you don't really get that good a deal. Comes with so many strings.
Level over level, over level, over level.
But, but if you, if you look at history and you track Hornet County, long before they came up with the acronyms, Hornet was at the table with federal, with military programs. They've been receiving money for a very long time. By simply insisting that military folks were using their facilities. We can assert the same claim and be genuine when we say it. But getting to the table, if you look at this layout, if you know anything at all about the political arena, if you look at this contingency here, this one's pretty clear to me. This is pretty clear.
What page, Your Honor, I'm on sixty-three.
If you look at the tier one, it's made up of Cumberland, Hornet, Hope, Moore, Richmond, and Robinson. Come on now. You don't understand that one, folks. That's the wrong view. And I don't, I don't blame or fault them, but the truth of the matter is, we have, we're probably the best, of, of, of all the, of each one of these counties in tier one, I bet you Sanford is as, is probably going to be the most sought out, sought after location.
I think so too.
When this transition starts.
Compared to those other counties.
Compared to the other counties, yeah.
Bad Walden Johnson building up.
So, would you like to see us pursue it relevantly?
Well.
I still don't know. I don't know if you're better off.
The answer is, yeah. I like to find out everything that they've gotten, who they're going to be getting. And then, and then raise the questions to why we want to include.
They add Robinson when I was down there for the last meeting.
Oh, it's just, it's right.
Yeah, it's just a writing.
And that's what they did to that five hundred, you know, cutoff increase.
That's all. They got campsites and military campsites around.
Robert, there was only five counties involved. She said they added Robinson's last meeting. They can, they can put Lee in there too, I guess.
Contact our two senators, show them that map and it's probably done. Why is your microphone up there? This is picking up everything. I don't like the microphone situation.
Well, if, if we don't, uh, if we don't. If we don't approve these bylaws.
It's started two hours ago.
I think you saw your reaction to that.
According to the bylaws. If we don't approve them, then we're not going to have anybody on the executive committee, right?
If you don't what?
If we don't approve this bylaw.
I don't know that you're going to be on there anyway, but.
We're already a steering committee member.
Oh, we're already on the, yeah.
That means this can't be ratified until all communities are, unless they have some provision to kick us off.
There's some word about the executive committee.
Yeah, it does.
That we have one, one person.
They said one thing about you don't have any power.
Dave, what's your gut feeling on this?
We need to be asking some questions while we're not in town. Look where Richmond County is on this little map that Miss Stevens produced.
Wouldn't you go ahead and address?
They're at sixty miles. It takes a sixty mile circle.
Wouldn't you address that to our senate delegation?
Other executive committee is just, uh.
I think you would first inform the BRAC steering committee of your intentions and then get with Mr. Hethridge.
That's all. That's on page seven. Page seven, that's all you got? That's that, did you decide whether it was Greg Martin or Greg Taylor?
I think it's Greg Taylor. He's the chairman of Bladen County Board of Commissioners. And I saw his name in some minutes. I think it's him.
He would be our spokesperson on that executive committee.
Right. And I think he.
Yeah, but he, we probably can do a good job for the league here.
Oh, yes.
He's doing a good job for the league.
So, what happens if we don't approve these bylaws?
Very ugly letter.
I could get expelled from the, the eleven county.
Get expelled from BRAC too.
Right. We'd get expelled.
No longer part of BRAC. Nobody's going to come to your county.
Right.
No one will move here.
This is, I think this is routine and I'm not opposed to, to this. Finding out how we got left out and how Robinson got in is what I'm interested in.
They way out, sir.
Yeah, but all I'm, what I heard was that Robinson was the last one to get inserted.
Yeah. It's process. I can work on it.
Alright.
Well, a motion is on the table to approve the bylaws, uh, the BRAC Regional Task Force.
He did.
He did, okay.
You making a motion?
Sure.
All of questions.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Let's, let's, just, uh, before I announce the votes, you can, you can go ahead.
Uh, I had a question.
Yes?
I said aye when you said, I heard you said I had a question.
I did call him, but, oh.
He called.
Okay, and before we go any further, Mr. Chairman, I would like to know who is going to follow up with this? Who are we designating to follow up with this? Is it going to be you? So.
Lisa Price and whoever the county manager designates who's going to follow up on this and report to us at the next meeting, August meeting.
Well, let, let's take this a little more serious.
I think so too.
It'd like, I'll be glad to contact our senator delegation and someone else can contract Congressman Hethridge's office.
I, I think all of that needs to take place ASAP. With all due respect, you, you're entering a field now where they're already organized. And we need representation that clearly states, we mean business. While you may be able to say that, get your title won. Manager speaks for the board, the delegation will speak for itself. And that's the first step we need to take, federal and, uh, state legislation, to get them on the go.
I'll be happy to work with Mr. Pascal and Mrs. Price, figure out where to go from here, figure out how Robinson got involved and how this group got started without Lee County at the table.
Okay, you can report back to the board directly. Okay, motion is taken.
Robinson was at the table.
That's it. I, I'm going, I'm going to call a ten minute recess. Because, um, it's, it's obvious that this is going to go on, uh, for a while. And, uh, what would you like to have brought in?
Some sandwiches?
Yeah, what kind of sandwiches?
Something quick.
What, uh, orderies, something like that?
Anything quick, quick. What do you want?
What, hamburgers, cheeseburgers?
How about little dinos? How we get, it's a cross tent, what's that?
I'm not going to teach that, it's somebody else's.
Cheeseburger, fries, dairy bar.
What page are we on?
Huh?
Page you were on.
Eighty-three.
No, how much do we have those two things right now? Get them out of the way. I guess we're working.
Let's go, August, uh, August and September, we have a Naco conference in the first week, uh.
Going back to Hawaii.
How about, uh, how about, uh. One meeting in Monday, that'll be on the, Monday, the fourteenth in August.
Where's it going to be?
And that'll be a nine o'clocker. Alright, any objections to that?
Unless we have public hearings.
Unless we have public hearings.
Okay, one meeting?
One meeting in August.
I bet Mr. Reeves won't say.
You're right. Oh, really?
At the nine o'clock, Rob?
Yeah, the nine o'clock unless we have public hearings and I'll, I'll check.
Okay, eight o'clock, seven thirty, finally.
And, uh, uh, then we have, um.
One meeting in August.
Uh, we've got one, we've got September.
You're down to the eight, you want to have one in September?
Conference there in that, too.
Why don't we just make it the eighteenth and have one in September?
We'll have one on the eighteenth and, uh, because we're going to have public hearings one of those nights, aren't we? Yeah. And we'll have one meeting, if there's no objections, one meeting in September and that will be on the, uh, Monday, the eighteenth. And it'll be, be a nine or three depending upon whether we have public hearings. Okay, voting delegate, uh, okay, voting delegate for the Naco Annual Conference.
Who'd go?
I don't know who's going.
This is the association.
Oh, this is in September.
Winston-Salem Conference.
So far, the only commissioners that have told me they were going are Commissioner Lamont and Commissioner Stevens.
Let's make them our voting delegation. Do we have two votes?
No, I just got one. Well, they did, the registration form just came out last week, didn't it?
I haven't got it yet. It came out online last week.
There's, there's no voting delegations for Naco? No, just for this, just for those. So, we got, um, Stevens, anyone of you two want to be the voting delegate?
Is that what you can do it?
Oh, we get to the, to the, to the, you have your left hand, you have your right hand.
I, I will nominate Commissioner Lamont to be the voting delegate then, but per Mrs. Stevens, uh, Dee Furman. If there's no, if no objections, we'll, uh. Jerry, you want to talk about cold on vehicles? Uh, that was one I.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, over the past, I guess, year, riding around through the county and during that rainstorm or just right after the rainstorm and everything that we had, I believe it was back June fourteenth.
I'll never forget that.
I don't get any of those wheels, but, uh, anyway, there was an accident there on Spring Lane. And, and what I would like for, uh, for us to, to be looking at, at a, uh, another meeting, I'm going to pass around some pictures that I took of a wreck just beyond my house, uh, at Spring Lane, right there at Perry Drive. Uh, at Spring Lane, right there at Perry Drive. I know the, the wrecker services and everything do what they can to, to, uh, get the cars and everything out of the way. Uh, as, as quick as they can. But one thing that they do fail to do is clean up. And this is a problem. This problem for the landowners. This is a problem for the state. And could be the county, who knows? But this is happening inside the city limits and outside the city limits. I'd like for us to, to look at the ordinances we have on the books. That govern the, the, uh, or regulating, uh, tow and recovery services. To, uh, have them, uh, be more responsible for cleaning up areas where they pull and tow wrecked vehicles. And I've had to pick up every bit of this stuff. He, one part of it's a gas tank, floor mats.
Yeah. Why do you think this is coming to an ordinance? Why wouldn't this just come into the responsibility of the owner of the car that was, uh?
It.
And, and through their insurance?
The one that's picking up the vehicle is the one responsible for getting up the stuff at the scene. I had to do it when I ran a wrecker service, tow and recovery service, uh, for a friend of mine for a number of years. When I left the scene of a, a wreck, there was no glass in the road. There was no, uh, uh, debris.
Sort of knocks down a tree or something like that.
Well, that's something, that's something the state can take care of. I mean, it's in the right of way. This is still in the right of way, but yet it's private property. But this is a problem throughout this county. But I think we ought to, uh, address it. I'm gonna, like I said, I'm gonna take this to the, to the cities. And, uh, you know, talk to them about it.
It's not our right of way. It's the highway.
State.
State.
Well, whatever, whatever we can do, you know, to, if we have to send a letter to the state, uh, Department of Motor Vehicles or, or whoever. That, uh, we need to send a letter to in reference to complaints.
I think, I think what Jerry is, is referring to is pieces of the automobile that they're picking up. That they're not picking up all the pieces.
Well, at three o'clock in the morning or two o'clock in the night. I mean, Jerry, those would be very hard to see if you're picking up a vehicle in the middle of the night. A lot of that stuff is dark and you know from being on the scene.
And I, I think law.
Next day you see all that stuff and you're like.
Dick Coos' responsibility, you know?
Law enforcement is responsible for that.
As I said, we don't own any roads.
Right, right.
Right.
But just like Commissioner Brown just said, law enforcement is on the scene until everything is moved. Uh, the injured are moved to the hospitals, the, uh, the wrecked vehicles are removed.
Try and find out where we got any right to tell him what to do.
Who sets the, the fees? For wrecker services?
The wrecker man.
Free market.
Man driving the vehicle.
The city, the city has, uh, and I've seen this.
I think, I think the only thing the city does is they have the police department and highway patrol to have a rotation of calls.
Yeah, to make it fair.
Well, they also have privileged licenses to operate a wrecker service in the city.
Right, they have to have the license.
But they're talking about what the patrol puts the orange decals on, the whoever the salvage people are to get those vehicles.
But just to tow a car for any reason in this city limits, you have a license.
I don't have very often. I've said I've been rode a week.
Oh, yeah. Jerry, why don't you, you, you run the city with this?
Yes, sir, I am. This is just, this is just one that my brother took.
There is another issue. The manufacturers have changed with bumpers. Bumpers tend to fall off cars a lot more. You go nowadays, you'll see a lot more on the side of the roads. You have a little bit of bumper scrape that tend to fall off more. Kind of like twelve on the other day on the place in Wilmington. I don't know who's stopping for that.
Whether it be bumper covers, bumpers, doors, uh. That is a gas tank right there.
Well, it, it might be, Jerry, that, the, the ones that the, uh, the city calls, you know, to remove the vehicles, the, the wrecker services is, uh. You might wanna check over there and, uh, it might just be to write a letter to them and, uh, that the city guys. Yeah, that's their, their total responsibilities. Let us know what the city says. Who are you gonna talk to over there in the city?
Uh, I'm gonna probably go, uh, to one of the law and finance committee meetings and just present this to them and, you know, let, let them know that it's happening all, you know, throughout the city and throughout the county.
Okay, would you let us know?
That's right, sure will.
Police department.
But one thing.
In the, in the city.
Need to. But one thing that can be done that, uh, Mr. Hall touched on was about, and, and I think you did too, Herb, was the rotation.
That's right.
If they don't pick this stuff up that's associated with this car, they can be removed from that rotation. I've seen that happen.
Okay.
And I've seen it for less.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is appointments.
ADA.
Board, we need one appointment. Has to be from the education system. And Commissioner Stevens was to find us a candidate.
Oops. I apologize, I've not done that yet. Can we delay it until August or not?
Yeah. When do they meet? Do you know when they meet?
Board only meets if there is.
If, if there's a, if there's a call.
I'll serve. I'll serve it. I'll serve it.
Can you? Is there a requirement?
You have to be from education.
It has to be an education.
Education representative.
I'll teach them.
Uh, environmental affairs board, one appointment.
I, I do have one.
I like that.
Oh, Reverend David Jenkins. I had a gentleman I, oh, boy. I do have a gentleman named, uh, Jeff Howell. He is the head of J C's. He also is the owner of Lee Code. He's a software developer, very interested in the environment. I've talked to him many times. He's the one who helped get the fireworks out in Comknock area. He is very interested in serving, very concerned and I've spoken. I will nominate Jeff Howell to serve.
And we have one that, we have one that filled out an application. It's Reverend David Jenkins on Wildwood Drive.
I'd move to nominate Mr. Jenkins.
How many do you need? One or two?
Well, I will withdraw my nomination. Uh, I, I, I really, I did not know that we, I don't know why I didn't know that.
What?
But I talked with Jeff and he couldn't come by, so.
Well, this guy's already got a.
Okay, so the one nomination, uh, there's no objections. We'll appoint, uh, uh, David Jenkins as, uh. To the, uh, environmental health, uh, environmental affairs board. Uh, Board of Health, Bob Tomlertry. Mr. Stevens.
I move that we appoint Susan Bailey to serve that position since Dr. Godshot has declined, um, serving again.
There's no objections since she has turned in an application, uh, for Susan Bailey to serve on the Board of Health. Uh, there's no objections. Uh, we'll appoint her by acclamation. Industrial facilities, finance, authority, uh, three appointments. We had, uh. You know, we reappointed two, did we not?
No, sir, you did not appoint anyone to that. Well, you reappointed, uh, Mr. Lawrence, yes.
Joe, Joe Lawrence, we did.
Please, please, two.
The mayor didn't respond.
Mayor didn't respond. Uh, anybody have any, uh. Have any nominations for that, uh?
Well, if the mayor was on there because of his position.
He wasn't.
He wasn't.
So Ms. Lawrence was already reappointed.
He applied.
Okay.
Board, we just need to continue that and try to find people to the next meeting. I don't know if we can.
Uh, Cooper Burkhead is, is in poor health.
Yeah, he's not, uh.
Well, why don't we just put the, uh, mayor on it and, uh, she can resign if she doesn't. Looks like he's gonna notice, is that right? She's kinda, maybe just, I would say. Fill the name in and the blank.
Point her in absentia.
Well, um.
Boy, Mr..
Ms. Arthur.
We can appoint Winston according.
Well, Mr. Esther did not respond to the letter or the application at all. So that led me to believe that he was serving.
Mr. Bries, I don't think we have the time to labor it too much.
When did, when did you, when did you, uh, send a letter to Cornegon?
She did?
What's that?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, just take care of it the next time. Try to find somebody. Anyway, if we don't have people put on, put on, we shouldn't, uh, do them without their consent.
Mid Carolina workforce, organized labor, Jerry.
Well, my way would stop people from not responding when I put them.
I've checked with Bobby Riddle, of course. Danell noted, uh, before that, uh, he hasn't attended either any or many of those meetings and, uh.
You were gonna contact somebody at the postal office.
And I contacted John Hilton, which is the, uh, inspector, and he's supposed to be, uh, working with some of the, uh, members there that's with the union, postal union. And, uh, he's supposed to be calling me back. They, they did have one, but I don't know if that person's still working there or not. I got one question.
Her name was Jen.
Right.
Elaine that served for several years, but I don't know if she's still employed.
I got one question. Does that person have to be employed or has been employed with a union?
Supposed to be a representative.
Supposed to be a representative of organized labor.
If they're, if they're still, like, with a local or something like that.
Be an actors guild over at the temple.
Yeah. Right, okay.
Probably didn't know that. Or teachers union even.
Okay, Jerry, we'll defer that and get us one for the next time. See you services, uh. Advisory boards.
I'd like to.
Huh?
Recommend, uh, Janice Coleman. I don't think she's got an application.
Yes, it's.
Yeah, we did.
It's supplemental or general.
It's in supplemental and Jan.
Janice Coleman?
Janice Coleman.
Okay, there's no objections. We'll appoint Janice Coleman. Who submitted a, um, application. Rest, uh, rest on nursery advisory board, two appointments. We have both of those, do we not, uh, you know? You said he had another one.
One is an alternate, uh, anyway.
Huh?
One is an alternate position.
Oh, you, who was, who was the one that you have?
Carol Williams. Carol Williams.
Okay, he has another one that he's gonna get to you, so we'll act on that at the next meeting, so we'll let him in. Yes, uh, so.
I move that we have.
If there's no objections, we'll put, uh, Carol Williams on by acclamation. It's, it's, if anybody's, um, on that, uh, there, there's, there's quite a turnover on that, uh, rest on nursery advisory board. I try to make every one of those meetings, if anybody has. Has any recommendations and it's, it's a hardworking committee. They have, uh, that whole committee, I think there's five. Five minorities on there, uh, but none, we have no, uh, no, um, no Latinos at all on there.
Don't they split up into three groups and they build.
They got, they got four different groups and they go around and they.
That's pretty big committee.
Huh?
That's pretty good sized community.
It's one of, it's one of the hardest working groups I've ever. Okay. Uh, managers report monthly financial report. Does anybody have? Have any questions to ask of? The manager?
I would, at this point. Not relevant to this report, but request that any budget requests be referred to. The finance committee of this board before it gets on the agenda.
Is that a new direction the board wants to take?
Well, it's what I'm asking.
Cause he has, the, you, you gotta, there, there's some of these that are of, uh, uh, you wanna set a limit on that because they.
Well, anything over fifty thousand dollars.
But my, my only concern there is the timeliness of it. If, if we can't meet and something comes up. It still needs to be addressed by the board.
Don't you think, don't you think we?
Unless it runs con.
School thing before it came to the board.
That runs, I would say that we need to do anything before finance that runs contrary to the directives of that finance, what we've done.
Right.
And the school, the policies that we've already said, anything that violates that or runs in contrast to that needs to be addressed by us. But anything that doesn't, like the school one obviously goes in contrast to our fund balance designation and some other things, but, uh, is that, is that a?
That'd be fine.
Okay.
So any initiatives or proposals that are contrary to our established financial policies and our.
Or, or something we didn't anticipate or.
Right.
That needs some direction.
Okay. Uh, how's. How's? How'd the year end up, David?
Well, sales tax is still not in yet, um, completely.
How about the expenditure?
We are gonna be, I don't have a final estimate of what revenues over expenditures will end up. I don't have a final closeout from mentor, Ms. Mentor yet.
Okay, two thousand five six work plan, uh, final report, Ms. Price. It's getting late, Lisa, and you have the customer service initiative implementation update.
The first is the fiscal year oh five oh six work plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is, will be the final rec, uh, report for that work plan. Um, there were nine initiatives, um, three, six of those have either been implemented or. Yeah, they have been started and some actually will be, one will actually be complete, uh, this month after the customers, last customer service training. Three of those initiatives, which is the strategic plan, the employee orientation and the trainee, employee training and development program are still in process. Um, the strategic plan will be redefined. We did brainstorming sessions with the, um, employees and with our department heads, but we just need to ta, take a closer look at that. The employee orientation program, uh, was planned to be implemented in July, but because of the new HR director, the, um, uh, employee signups.
That's good.
That will be, so everything is, so those three will be carried over into this fiscal year.
Okay, I just have one quick question. The, uh, the merit pay performance evaluation system.
Yes.
Feedback I've gotten to that, and correct me if I'm wrong, they're under the impression that they're supposed to be doing stuff to address efficiency and be noticeable to customers. Cause they're, they're under, seems like. That they're being, the, the, the big thing, you know, they're talking about these big things. That's not, is that the performance system?
No.
Okay, why, why are they confused about that?
I'm not really sure, but we've just completed the training for the employees and the supervisors last week. We will be, uh, meeting, Kenny and I.
And then the performance, cause, so you guys out, laid out for them the fact that they can do stuff to improve things as a team or whatever, that's a big thing, but the performance pay will be outlined a little differently.
No, the performance pay was outlined last week.
Okay, that's what, they seem to believe.
I think they're getting it confused with our customer service initiatives, which is to be noticeable to the customers and.
Yeah.
Um, we ask the, and that could be, Mr. Adams, because we ask them to align it with the mission of the county and the mission of the departments.
Cause they're thinking that their performance evaluation is based on these big initiatives rather than their actual job of it.
So we're, we're actually gonna be meeting with them. We're gonna set up some work sessions to help them better understand that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The next item she has, uh, Lisa has on the agenda is the customer service initiatives by a department.
Yes.
They start on page one hundred seventeen. It's her cover letter and then, uh, following.
There are seven completed customer service initiatives to date. The others are either almost complete or I know that the, the finance office on the payroll is really just getting started with surveys from the employees. So those are moving along as well, and employees in those departments have been working very hard to meet those customer service initiatives.
Well, the ones that you have here, like, I'm looking at finance, it's March first two thousand six is the implementation date.
That is correct.
Not completed?
She did not meet that date because of the pay for performance, the budget, not pay for performance, performance measurement, and the budget was in there, the CIP, so she recently just sent surveys to the departments.
Okay. It's good to have this.
I would like to mention that the tax office initiative will be submitted for the Ketner Award, which is an award by Ralph Ketner Food Lion, so that, their deadline, deadline is this Friday, and they are submitting that program.
I remember talking to David, I was like, why aren't we submitting?
And there are actually some other things, the CLUE program is being submitted, and I found out today that, I believe, I.T. will submit also some initiatives.
Some loans that won are far less than what you guys have done. I just look at those every year and go, why aren't we submitting everything?
Health Department, I mean, I've done a lot of.
Performance management system.
Things out with, that library, I've heard a lot of positive things about that with the enrichment center on Amels and Wheels. They're now sending library books with the delivers at noon, and that's going over exceptionally.
Right, and Mr. Hanks, for the Ketner Award, it must have been done in two thousand five, so hopefully next year we will submitting a lot more of these initiatives as well.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions to ask of Ms. Price on this customer service initiative?
I think they've done a good job.
David, do you have anything else?
Yes, sir, I do, just really quickly, you are all aware that a version of Medicaid relief did pass, which means about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar one-time stopgap measure for the county of Lee.
Is, is that actual money, David, or is that just that we won't be encumbered with that new increase?
Won't be, I, I understand it won't be encumbered with the increase.
Yeah, I, my understanding is no money.
My expenditures will be capped. All it means is savings in our projected budget.
Thank you.
They project that at one fifty-five.
But we don't know yet.
It may actually be more. Because we, we, as you know, our social services department uses some sophisticated estimate. The legislative liaison committee did take a trip to Raleigh last week, and do see in your supplemental agenda, Ms. Lane's items of interest, is a news release from Pitt County.
Yes.
Gives you a little background, but we had a very interesting day in Raleigh a week ago, and got to be party too firsthand, a lot of gamesmanship, and got to witness up close the fate of our bill and watching.
Talking about the half cent?
Yeah, watching people get what they needed out of it.
Yesterday on N.C. Spin, that was the topic of the last ten minutes, and everyone except John Hood, oh, John, John I don't think spoke during what I was watching, but everyone else on there was in favor of giving the, the counties the option to go for the half cent for schools construction, all of them said that get, get this off the property taxes.
Who was on there? Who was on there?
Chris Simons and Castravos was on there, and it was the first show ever that Tom Campbell was not modeling.
Who was the?
Joe Mabredic typically there.
He was on there.
Hood's typical response on that is, yeah, do it if there's a corresponding offset in the property tax. That's where you need to put some kind of.
Well, everyone believes that, apparently, except the people that vote, because they have placed.
They saw it as a taxing.
Medicaid, they're, and you read in the Pitt County news release that they have placed Medicaid relief.
They just want to be the taxpayer authority for the state.
As their higher priority, whatever that means. But we did go up there and got to watch that thing fizzle out in person, but it had a little spark there before it's gone aflame, and Ms. Stevens and Mr. Brown can.
It is dead?
Yes.
As a dork.
Yes, this, this session.
We met with.
So we can do, we can do this all over again.
We met with the Senate leadership last Tuesday.
Unless there's another initiative, Jerry, but yeah.
And got differing opinions on how it was going to die. But at the end of the day, the Medicaid relief study commission idea trumped the half cent.
We got, we got.
Charlotte got a new carbono taxes.
A definite no from Tony Rand, and then we went down to Mark Bassnight's office and got entirely the different, a different story. He was going to force it to come up and get out of committee, but it didn't happen.
And it was heard.
Yes, it did. It did happen.
It didn't get out of committee.
Oh, right, oh, right.
It was heard in committee, they refused to take any action.
But it was heard only for information purposes.
Right.
Anything else, David?
Two other things, our airport bill hasn't still not been approved, it was wrapped up in some significant legislation where lots of bills were rolled into one, it was one sticking point due to, I think, Union County issue, and Mr. Atwater corresponded with me this morning, trying to find out how, but gave me his word that he was going to try to find out how that thing was going to be passed as quickly as possible, and he promised that one way or another it would be passed before they got out of town. Last thing I wanted to bring up.
That is not, not the answer I got from John, who talked with Atwater, that it's, it's, it's in package with a bunch of bills, but it, it has the caveat, caveat that not effective until it becomes law, which means not until the governor signs it, and so I, that batch of bills, that's when they, that's when they become effective, is that right, Dick? And so I asked him, I says, when is the governor going to sign the, is going to sign the bills? And he made some calls and said it could be a week, two weeks, a month.
Well, that's completely contrary to what I understand. My understanding is that the revised bill has not had concurrence of both houses, three chambers.
Well, no, I'm saying.
And it hasn't got out of legislature yet.
Yeah, but I'm saying, that's what I said.
Sure.
I, I said it's locked in with a bunch of bills, but even after the legislature passes it, it has not begun law until they.
Absolutely, absolutely, I'm sorry.
Just because it gets out of the legislature, it's not law.
But Charlotte got its rental car tax increase for their light rail and downtown arts project.
Uh, one last thing, just want to bring you to your attention. Just want to bring you to, to your attention, the presence of the cameras and this extremely hot microphone that's driving me crazy, Ryan. You are on camera, if you're in this room, is something to be cognizant of from now on. Whether or not it's being broadcast or not, or recorded or not, is not what I'm, is really not the point. The point is, if you're in this room, expect to be on camera from now on. Tonight, today, we are broadcasting live via the internet. I don't think we're recording this meeting.
Are you podcasting? Because if you're podcasting, it's recorded, it's not only are you broadcasting it, it's there, people can download.
Did this meeting get recorded today?
Yeah, it was, it was live broadcast on the internet.
If this meeting is being recorded, move the camera up and down. Yes, it is being recorded. Right by here. So yes, this is being recorded, the next thing we have to work out is getting it broadcast on cable, on channel.
Okay. Anything else?
That's awesome.
Mr. Reeves, anything else?
Take out all the scenes of where you're eating.
Edit the scenes of the internet, yes.
Any, any other, Commissioner Cummins, Mr. Reeves? Commissioner Vaughn. David, you put out a letter on July the sixth, I think it went through all of the commissioners talking about a, a finance team to start talking with the underwriters council and Davenport and company and so forth. Have you started that yet?
We set a meeting effective today, and I think it's next Thursday. We'll be meeting with Bob Hindt and Cole.
And what, what's the subject of that?
Well, we have to.
The reason, the reason I bring that up, I, I pulled this out of the, out of the file because of the work session this morning, we don't know what, and we don't have any, any quotes yet, they haven't gone out for quotes on the Floyd Knight edition, they're obviously, they're, they're not ready at all to go out for quotes for the middle school yet. I just wonder if all of this is premature until we get some.
No, sir, there is still a lot of work to done, just to, just to get to the point where we're ready to receive their formal request to finance. One thing that comes up off the top of my head, and Mr. Hall's aware, is that our middle school site is already encumbered by the loan on the high school. We have to unencumber that property first and foremost. There's, and there's other little things that we're going to have to do to get prepared. I've talked to Mr. or Dr. McCormick about trying to get from them a solid timeline of their work, and when will they be ready to present to us firm quotes? And he should be producing that, I hope, in the next four weeks.
Kenny and I have a meeting with DeMar to discuss what ones in the whole park project. As you know, they're encroaching on the park project. Hopefully, it's going to be somewhat settled, but it was settled with the previous architect, it's not now, and the baseball field might end up with a two hundred and fifty-foot left field fence.
We, our plan is to be prepared by December one, and there's things we have to do to get to that point, including a preliminary meeting with the local government commission.
Okay. Kenny? You have anything?
Yes. The, the one issue that I had added early on that got skipped over.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, but I apologize.
It's okay.
I had it down here.
It's just me, no problem. Citizen, I'd like to, for us to consider creating a citizen advisory committee with respect to the school system, because we know there are a lot of challenges in public education. I think for us, at the citizen level, to have a more comprehensive view of charter schools, variety of educational choices, the hundred students at the community college, you know, and these kind of things, so we can be ahead of the curve with respect to what is happening in public education in our county, and not just being led willy-nilly by state and federal government on these things, but for us to have people involved on the ground, preparing and overcoming the sixty-six, seventy-two percent we simply cannot afford to fail our kids. And I just wanted to throw that out. We had one with respect to the, the new school construction.
That was school construction.
And that, and that, and that committee, I think, functioned very effectively and led us down the.
That was after the bond issue of two thousand fifteen.
But I think it serves a, a number of purposes, not the least of which is letting people know what all's out there in education, but also for us to get buy-in more for our school bonds and things on down the road, but I think getting citizen buy-in all along is important.
Who, who would be the makeup of something like this?
I think we would make it up very similar to the citizen advisory committee we created last time, using that as a template. I think that would be great.
And what's their goal, I mean, what's, what's their audience?
The goal is to address some of the concerns with respect to what's standing in our way to get above that seventy-two or sixty-five percent between ninth until tenth, ninth and twelfth grades, to simply get our children better prepared for the future, and doing something different here rather than just continuing to look at public education and fund it and watch it not succeed.
Shouldn't that be something that should be endorsed and?
By the school. Yes, sir, I think it is a joint venture, and I think we need buy-in from the city and the county and the school system as a community to be united on, ensuring that we don't leave our kids and fail our kids with, with, with a promise we've made to them. We've made a promise to the parents and taxpayers that we'll help you, if you help us keep your kid in the school system K through twelve, we'll give them a sound, basic education. We're falling short of that, and we're spending a lot of money falling short of that goal.
Will you discuss this with the school board?
Be more than happy to.
I'm suggesting.
Do that, and also with the, with the Carnegie.
Okay, I will, I will.
How many members?
But Bob, Bob served on that citizen advisory committee last time, I felt it was, even with all the disagreements, I felt it was a fundamentally sound board, and we covered a lot of ground, and I think we should do that. I think the EDC would be very interested in this as well, because it is, it is important for us to have people who can deal with society.
Oh, Bob, share that again, you did such a good job on the tack.
I appreciate that, we'll talk about that.
Amy?
No, it's excellent.
It? Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Okay, that ends our regular meeting. I'd like to entertain, entertain a motion, we go into closed session for, with two, two purposes, to discuss location expansion of business in the area and to discuss personnel matter for North Carolina General Statute, one forty-three, three one eight. Got to have a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Vaughn. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? We are now in closed session.
About food, he's got food here.
Would you like to do closed session in the wicker room? There's food in the wicker room. Oh, in the small.
No, 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 that's right.